I'd like to call to order this meeting of the City of Nashua Planning Board for July 11th, 2019. Mr. Secretary, can you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Donches. Mike Peterson.
Present.
Scott Leclerc.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Edward Weber.
Here.
Alderman David Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Mary Ann Mizili Goya.
Yes, I'm here but I will not be voting, thank you.
Steve DeCrane. Jerry Rupucci.
Here.
Maggie Harper.
Okay, so we have enough active members for a quorum, so we'll begin. We have in front of us the minutes from the June 30th, 2019, Planning Board. Is anybody a chance to take a look at them? I want to make a motion, I'd probably just caution that at least the date at the top needs to be changed.
I looked at them.
Okay, Mr. Rupucci?
I reviewed them and they look good to me, and I'll make a motion if somebody has nothing else. The date should be June 20th on this, just got the wrong date on it, but that's the date of the meeting.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve with the amended date on the top and in the first paragraph. Anybody have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tenza, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Um, abstentions.
Abstentions, yeah, so myself and you.
So, I'm voting, to make sure we have that.
Two, three, four.
Majority.
So it's...
Five.
Well, one, two, three, four, and two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, alright.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay, Communications, Roger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of Planning Board. I thought we were going to have a short board tonight in terms of numbers, but this is great. Just a reminder, if you could let us know, or Chris Weber know if you're going to be coming or not coming, so we can arrange, so we have a quorum.
Sure.
There was a little panic this time because we didn't know, so I appreciate that. The first item in your packet that I'll go over, if you want to turn to that, is just a reminder, there's a meeting next Tuesday night, July 16th at 7:00 PM, and the Alderman Planning and Economic Development Committee is going to be discussing the sidewalk ordinance, and I think the board members who wish to attend have been invited. I... You can't hear? Okay, sorry, Richard. That is in your packets, so that is, there's a, I also attached the former memorandum dated May 14th, and one dated today. You have an item, the next item is dated July 10th, it's case number four, comments from the City Engineers Department on 370 Amherst Street on the PS&amp;H Building. You also have on case number nine, which is 110 East Hollis Street, you have an approval letter from the City Engineers Office. You also have on case number nine, which is 159 Temple Street, you have another approval letter from the City Engineers Office.
Okay.
You have a communication dated July 9th from the Office of Economic Development Director Tim Cummings concerning R19148, which is your other business item number three, he's speaking in support of that item. You have some photographs concerning other business item number four, which is the petition to release a facade easement at the Country Tavern. And that's all I have. Reminder that the Planning Board has scheduled a workshop in August.
Yep.
But we can discuss that too at your August meeting, which will be before that as well.
Great.
So, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Report of committee and liaisons, Ed, anything from committee?
The NRPC had a meeting, I was not able to attend because I was out of the state, and the HDC did not have a meeting this month.
Okay, alright. Okay, I'm now going to go ahead and read the procedure of the meetings and hearings for everyone here in the audience. So, after each legal notice of conditional special use permit site plan or subdivision is read by myself, the board will first determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, the public hearing will begin, and at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and a description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations. The board will then have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant and the staff. I'll then ask for any testimony from the audience. First, I'll ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to a plan. If you so choose, you can come forward to the microphone, make sure you state your name and address for the record, and this will be your time to express any concerns or ask any questions that you may have regarding the plan. Next, I'll ask for any testimony from anyone from the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then, if needed, ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll respond to any questions or concerns raised during the public testimony. If so necessary, I will allow the, one more trip to the microphone by the public. We'll want you to designate one representative, so you can get together and talk if you want prior to that, at which time you can respond to those items brought forth during the applicant's rebuttal period. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume a public meeting. At that time, we'll deliberate and vote on the application in front of us. At this point, I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject in hand and not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all of our applicable approval criteria established in our Nashua Revised Ordinances for Conditional Special Use Permits, Site Plans, and Subdivision Plans. I'd thank everybody at this time for your interest and courteous attention. Ask if you do have a cellphone, please put it on vibrate or silent at this time. Okay, so, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Old business site plans, there are none. New business conditional special use permits, case number one, the Ralba Vasquez owner, application and acceptance of proposed conditional use permit to convert a two-family into a three-family home. This property is located at 38 and 38A Prescott Street. I'd also like to hear case number six, which is the site plan associated with this particular conditional special use permit at the same time, from the applicant. From the board, I want to remind you, you need to take jurisdiction of both of those first if we're going to hear the applicant. Do I have a motion regarding case number one, as to whether the application is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
Oh, he had his hand.
Motion by Mr. Rupucci to take jurisdiction, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? That motion passes. Regarding case number six, this is the site plan for the same property and owner, do I have a motion as to whether that's ready for jurisdiction? I have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Rupucci, do you have a second on that? Second by Mrs. Peterson, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay. So, from the applicant, floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mike Pluff, Lance of Airwood Fieldstone Land Consultants. I'm here tonight to represent Nora Vasquez, who's the owner of lot 6235, located at 38 Prescott Street. We are seeking approval of a conditional use permit to allow multifamily use in the urban residence zone. This proposal is for an addition of a one-family apartment to an existing two-family home. The existing area of lot 6235 is .2 acres, with 50 feet of frontage, building setbacks are 10 feet front, 7 feet side, and 20 feet rear. We have submitted the approval criteria for the conditional use permit, and I can address each point, should the board wish, or if there are any questions, I can certainly address them now.
Let me just tickle up. I don't think we have to go through them unless anybody from the board has a question regarding...
We have the memo.
Does anybody have any questions regarding these approval criteria that are listed? No? Okay, alright, you can keep going.
With that, that's pretty much all I have for the conditional use permit. Did you want me to go into the site?
Yep, just go right into it, yep.
And again, I'm here tonight to represent a site plan, application for a 16-foot by 20-foot, 320 square foot, one-family apartment addition to the existing two-family home. The one-family apartment has actually been constructed, constructed without, following the normal planning process, and we are here tonight to correct this issue. Along with the addition, we are proposing five new parking spaces to accommodate the three-family home, together with a proposed swale and leaching catch basing at the northwesterly side of the lot. We are also proposing to remove three areas of existing pavement with, which will be loomed and seeded, to increase the pervious area of the site. Just keep it simple here, we've reviewed the staff recommendations and we have no issues with them. With that, I open up to any questions the board might have.
Okay. And you've reviewed the, oh, so you've reviewed the letter from Joe Mandola as well?
Yes.
Questions on the board, Mr. Rupucci?
So, when this addition was constructed, when we say outside the normal planning, to me that means it was put up there without any permissions or permits. Am I right about that, or is it's not, is that not right?
Well, from what I understand, I'm not privy to everything that went on, but I thought a building permit was issued at one time, but then maybe it was issued in error. Maybe the planning staff could add more light to that. We came in, we came in kind of after the fact, after the addition was already constructed.
Okay, so, maybe we can ask that question.
Yeah, staff, do you know whether it was?
I think when they added the kitchen, they weren't aware what they were doing was incorrect, and the building department was able to get the thing rolling, to go through the proper process.
I'm sorry, I can't...
They added a kitchen, and when they added the kitchen, they called the building department, and the building found out that they had already done some work, and they said, "You're going to need to come back and follow regular procedures."
So when they built the addition, they did that without a permit?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so, really what my question would be is, does the structure that's there now, the new structure as well as the existing structure that's being converted from a two to a three family, does that, is that inspected by the city?
Oh, absolutely.
To be brought up to code, today's code?
Absolutely.
So if that addition was built seven years ago or 10 years ago, it's still, it's still meeting the code for, that the inspectors, it's still satisfying the inspections that are standards today?
As a matter of fact, a special inspection by the fire department and the building department and the engineering was issued to make sure that everything was going to conform to modern, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And it wasn't that long ago that the addition was made, not, not seven years or anything.
No, no, I was just throwing that out just for example.
Right, just for...
Alright, thank you, that's, that's all I have.
Other questions by the board? No, okay. At this time, I'd ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak, or opposition or concerned with the plan? Seeing none, I'd ask, is anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor? Hearing none, I'd ask the board, do you have any other further questions of the applicant or staff during the hearing? Okay. At this time then, I'm going to go ahead and move to a public meeting, so, alright, so... Thanks, yep. So we have in front of us, reminder, two items here, conditional use permit and as well as the site plan. Looks like we're, this is sort of a correcting of the records, if you will. Mr. Rupucci had a good question, it sounds like the city's inspected everything at this point. We don't have any staff stipulations on the use permit, we do have some on the site plan, so I keep that in mind if you're going to make a motion on those, so. Any discussions, Mr. Varley?
I think there's no questions.
No questions, there's discussion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Varley, you want to make a motion?
In that case, I would make a motion to approve new business number one, conditional use permit, finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO Section 190-133F with no stipulations.
Alright, so a motion to approve new business number one, the conditional use permit, do we have a second on it? Second by Mr. Rupucci, any further discussion on that item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion passes. New business number six, site plan.
I would make a motion to approve new business number six, site plan, finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO Section 190-146D with a total of seven stipulations, all as reading, reading is written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Varley to approve new business number six, site plan, do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Rupucci, any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Rupucci?
This, this is just a general thing that I think the planning department agrees with, but when we put the stipulation in that, that things will be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department, I would, I would prefer to see a little bit of additional language in that, that makes it clear that if they can't, if they can't come to a satisfactory agreement, that it comes back to us, that the decision is made by our board, and that should happen within the window that we can open the case. Rather than just leave it like that, it, it's not a commentary on anybody, it just seems like it's, we don't have a resolution, if the engineering department says no, it's not clear by our stipulation that it comes back to us. I guess it does anyway, according to what Linda told me earlier, but I'd just like to see that language there.
Alright, do you want, are you asking for an amendment on the...
I am.
Clarify the, okay.
Just, just to, just, and every time we see this, not just this application, if they're unable, if they have a dispute they can't resolve, it should be brought back to the planning department, to the planning board for resolution.
And, did you second the motion, or?
I seconded the motion, and then we had the discussion, so...
So, maybe I'll make a...
Yeah.
Would everybody be agreeable to be withdrawing the original motion and substituting an amended motion?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, so, I will withdraw the original motion, and I'll make a new, new motion to approve new business number six, site plan, again, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO Section 190-146D with a total of seven stipulations, and I would make an amendment to the first stipulation, such that it reads, "Prior to recording the plan, all comments in a letter from Joe Mandola, P.E., dated February 7th, 2019 shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department," and then adding as follows, "In the event that such comments cannot be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department, the, the plan will come back before the Planning Board for final decision." And then, I would...
That's perfect.
And then stipulations two through seven, as written in the staff report.
Thank you, I'll second it again.
Okay, so we have the new motion by Mr. Varley, as stated, do we have a second? Mr. Rupucci, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda, new business subdivision plans, case number two, Public Service of New Hampshire and City of Nashua, application acceptance of proposed lot line relocation, property is located at 3 and 21 Pine Street Extension, and we're going to hear that along with case number three, which is the site plan associated with the same entities and location, so.
You can share that with others. We're sorry, is that the other point?
Yeah, the other. So, I'll ask the board, if anyone had a chance to review item number two, the subdivision plan, and want to make a motion as to whether the plan is ready for us to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Peterson, any second? Second by Mr. Rupucci, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now regarding case number three, the site plan for this item, anybody want to make a motion regarding taking jurisdiction?
I will.
Alright, so, taking jurisdiction by Mr. Rupucci, any second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson, discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Alright, floor is yours, and start with the subdivision plan, and then you can just move right into the site plan.
So if you don't mind, I just could give a quick background to the project.
So you should probably get in front of the mic a little bit.
Just step right up at the mic and make sure you...
There you go, move it if you want.
I don't know if they're on, are they? Are they on?
It's on, yep. Yeah, give your name and, name and address, yep.
Okay, my name's Alan Rowe, I am the Eversource Project Manager for the project. My address is 13 Legends Drive, Hooks, New Hampshire.
Thanks.
And so a quick background for this project, so, some of the equipment in the substation that we call Mill Yard, off Pine Street Extension, has been in service since 1949, and is becoming increasingly unreliable. The substation supplies more than 2,000 customers in Nashua, and was scheduled to be rebuilt in 2020 to maintain the reliability for customers. So prior to starting the project, we looked at various alternatives, including new substations on Front Street, in the vicinity of the Technology Park, and on Nashua Drive, but the preferred cost, preferred option and least cost option was to rebuild the existing substation in Situ. However, in discussions with the city, we identified an alternative option, which was to swap an identical land parcel with the city and build a new substation on the adjacent parcel. This benefits Eversource because it allows us to relocate some 34KV lines that cross the river onto a peninsula that is difficult to access, and it also benefits the city in that it creates a contiguous parcel that can be developed in future, in line with the city's master plan. The subsidy, the new substation will occupy roughly the same footprint, will have the same numbers of transformers, the same number of lines in and out, the switchgear enclosure will be slightly larger than it is now to accommodate modern relaying and control equipment, and in terms of schedule, detail engineering is scheduled to start shortly, and construction is scheduled to commence at the start of 2020, with completion by the end of that year, and then followed by the demolition of the existing site and site cleanup. And with that, I'll hand over to Nick, who prepared the plans, but I just also want to say that here, today with me, I've got Sarah Hudlett, who represents our Siting and Service, Siting and Construction Services team, Elizabeth Bradshaw, who is the Distribution Engineer, and Matt Merrick, who will be the Construction rep on site, so if you've got any questions, the team will be able to answer those.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for the overview, Alan. Let's go full screen with this, just so that you can see this a little bit better. There we go. Thank you again, Alan, and the, the long and short of it is, existing antiquated substation, city partnered with Eversource to relocate it.
You need to introduce yourself to us first.
Okay, Nick Golan, I'm a licensed engineer and senior project manager with T.F. Moran, 48 Constitution Drive in Bedford. Just to reiterate, relative to Alan's presentation, Eversource and the city working together to relocate an antiquated substation to provide an opportunity for future development options for the city. Now, relative to where we are located, this is 3 and 21 Pine Street Extension, tax map 77, lot 2A and 17, this is zoned general industrial and mixed use. Relative to what's being proposed, as Alan mentioned, we are taking the existing Eversource lot, which was located here, and essentially transplanting it to this northwest quadrant to allow a contiguous lot for the City of Nashua. The acreage, as far as the proposed lot, 0.5861 acres, the city lot grows by thousands of an acre to 1.3625. You can see that there's some cross easements that are identified on our plan, this for the purpose of either underground or overhead services, as well as to accommodate the site development for stormwater management and access drives to the lot. Now, relative to the lot line adjustment, you'll notice that you do have two waiver requests in front of you, one of which was at the city's request, that being from your bylaws, Section 9.5, to allow recording of the plan prior to completion of the appeal period, and then also relative to the overall survey from Section 192, 82B9, such that we would not have to locate physical features within 1,000 feet of the work. The reality is, we're pretty darn close here when we look at the overall plan, so when this was originally scoped, we hadn't taken into account the 1,000 square feet. Given what we're proposing and where it's located, surrounded by the peninsula, it is the Merrimack River, or the Nashua River, there's more than adequate detail for the purposes of the lot line adjustment. So, relative to the lot line adjustment, I'll leave it at that, and I'm not sure, were you going to take this item first in totality before we move on to the site plan?
No, go ahead and just talk right through the site plan, and then we'll do questions.
There you go. Let's load that drawing up. Full screen. Alright, well I don't need to reiterate where we are, same lot in question. The existing lots, as currently constituted, the Eversource substation located here, once we build the new substation, this substation would be removed, loomed and seeded. There is a bit of scraggly brush and some tree vegetation that's on the existing lot, that would be cleared to make way for the substation. The existing gravel access drive, which is located here, be removed and relocated to accommodate the new development. So here is the new access road. There is some maneuvering space located in front of the substation, as we do have some oversized vehicles that do need to enter, one for construction purposes, then also for maintenance purposes relative to the equipment located within the yard. Relative to that yard, it's just under 14,000 square feet, approximately 124 by 112 feet, measured across its axis. You'll see there are some new utility poles that will be installed to accommodate the overhead lines. One thing you'll notice as an improvement, and is the vast majority of the area as we head towards Pine Street Extension, those lines have been moved underground, so it provides a bit of a benefit to the city in, in the marketing or otherwise for the ability to use that lot. As far as the area of disturbance for our work, in aggregate, we've got about 1.6 acres between the two lots, we've got about 1.4 that will be disturbed. Looking at the general sighting of the substation, it's a very flat area pitched towards the edges, where stormwater runoff that does occur would be picked up in a swale and transported into a four bay before overfilling, or overtopping I should say, into an infiltration basin. From a design standpoint, we've designed up to 100-year, such that there's no discharge from that basin, knowing that there's potential future development in this area, having stormwater discharge into that area wasn't seen as really being a positive outcome, so we have incorporated... So we have incorporated those types of design measures to our plan to help facilitate that future work. Relative to the other components of the site plan, there is no permanent lighting. It's emergency lighting only. Essentially, if your lights are off, their lights are on in the efforts to get your power back on. I'll keep it fairly short and sweet. If there's particular questions in regards to the layout of the substation or otherwise, we're here to answer those questions.
Thanks. Can you just describe like the fencing and stuff around it?
So it is a eight-foot chain link fence with a one-foot barbed wire arm. And we do have a lovely detail of that, which is located in this upper left-hand corner. Just to get you a little bit of a feel. So it's a security fence. It's intense to keep people out. It's not slatted or otherwise, as you do need the opportunity for fire or emergency services to be able to see in it. The last thing we want is somebody to be inside the substation that's not supposed to. So we do work hand in hand with law enforcement with those types of design criteria.
Okay. Other questions by the board? Mr. Pucci?
Yeah, I'm not sure if the applicant is the person, but I'll bring it up now in case they have input to it. I'm flattered, so anytime we improve the infrastructure is great. I think this is a good deal for everybody. There is a stipulation on here, though. Number two, the request for, and I'm talking about the subdivision plan. They're asking us to waive our bylaw and which, in the thirty-day appeal period, for the subdivision. We may have a bylaw to that, but I think that's a statutory requirement that there be an appeal window. I don't, so we can waive our bylaw, but that doesn't mean we can relieve the statutory requirement for that. So I could be wrong about that. I could be educated on it, but I think it is in RSA. So what's the impact of us not waiving that? What my experience with windows of appeal is, once something is approved, the applicant can go forward, but they're going forward at their own risk. If an appeal occurs that causes a delay, that's at the feet of the applicant. So why do we need this stipulation? How will it impact the project if we don't grant it?
I think, you know, the answer is you're correct that we're not, we wouldn't, we can't waive the statutory time period. It's exactly as you're suggesting. Basically, we're saying, we'll waive our requirement under our bylaws that you wait for the expiration of the thirty-day period to proceed. We'll allow you to do that and you'll be doing so at your own risk.
Perfect. Okay, if that's what we're saying, then that's, I'm good with that.
If I could add to that, that statutory thirty days doesn't start until the city makes an agreement with PSNH, which will be sometime in August. So it's going to be way past the thirty days of tonight's hearing. Because it's a condition that is subject to an agreement being made, that's when the approval happens. And so the thirty-day appeal period starts from that point in time. So there's going to be way more, there's going to be a lot of time between this meeting and when that thirty day starts. The city would like to close on this, I think sometime in, I believe in August. Aldermen are acting on it at their first meeting in August. I'm trying to remember the date. It's whatever it is.
Is it the thirteenth? No, it's not the fifth.
I think it's the thirteenth, is it? But anyway, it doesn't matter. That's when, when that happens, that's when your thirty, the thirty-day appeal period starts, since it's a conditional approval. It's not a normal, just a ordinary stipulation of approval subject to some administrative things being done. I hope that clears it up for you.
Well, if you agree with Mr. Varley, what Mr. Varley said, I'm satisfied, so.
Okay.
Whether that, I'm not disputing what you're saying, but.
No, it's, my discussion's with Corporation Council on that. I'm just reiterating that, okay?
Then I'm satisfied.
Do you have a, just a general time period of the construction?
Well, a lot of it is obviously tied directly to be able to close with the city. But overall duration, for a substation construction of this size, six to eight months is kind of standard fare. Depends on whether or not we go into a winter season, which elongates it. A lot of it also is predicated on ordering of materials, which in this case wouldn't take place until that approval is consummated. But as a general timeframe, that would be construction window.
Okay. Sure, just make sure you say your name and address again.
Alan Rowe, Eversource, thirteen Legends Drive, Huxit. So as it stands at the moment, we are starting preliminary engineering. The intention would be to get the final engineering completed by probably around the end of the year. In the meantime, we would be ordering some of the long lead time materials, the transformers and the switchgear. We would break ground in January. By the time we've completed the subgrade work, foundations, trenches, conduit, that kind of thing, that would get us to around March. Then the switchgear and transformers will be ready and the foundations will be there available to put the things on. And from then on, there's about six months work of construction of the rest of the equipment around the outside. A couple of, maybe two months of testing and commissioning and the cut over of the existing lines into the new substation. So as Nick says, probably around September, October time, we'll be getting to finish. Conservatively, I'm saying in service end of year. And then when we finish that, we can then go and wreck out the existing substation, which will take us probably a couple of months, by which time we'll be able to, you know, reseed at that point and do any restoration. So twelve months of construction, three months of tidying up and revegeting.
Okay. The question, one question I add is, was there any environmental testing on the existing PSNH site?
We have, yeah. And we've provided the city with a copy of the results that we've found. There are, there's not a great deal of contamination with inside the substation fence. There's some PCB contamination that we know of and we've undertaken to clean all of that up as we demolish the site and leave it in a situation that could be sold on. And we've also done some initial desktop analysis of the city's parcel as well. And so we understand what the level of contamination is in that site.
Yeah, okay. Alderman Tenza, do you have a question?
I had a question along the same lines. In other projects we've done demolition, have you had, have there been problems or any limitations on development of that land afterwards? And who would be responsible for that under this plan? Would it be PSNH or the city?
GZA Environmental has been retained to basically do the environmental component of whatever is found on site, how is it remediated or otherwise. So my understanding, there was a negotiation between the city and Eversource as to what condition the sites would be left in, which is part of the agreement that the Board of Aldermen would sign off on. So the people that need to make the right decisions have done so and the appropriate professionals are providing the guidance necessary.
Okay. Other question, Mr. Weber?
You have an infiltration basin. Who's going to be taking care of that, maintaining that for the duration or whenever?
My understanding is Eversource would be the responsible party for that.
And you have, for overgrowth and stuff like that that will be cleaned on a, maintained?
As part of the project, there's an operation and maintenance manual for the stormwater management. So Eversource would be tied to that as far as its maintenance.
Okay. There's a, wanted to know what the impact would be on the surrounding areas. There's an access road that's going to the, to the parking, park, you know, Mildred Falls. And what will your construction impact be on that?
Do you have any information specific to that, Alan? I don't know that I do. Please.
So as part, again, of the purchase and sale agreement and the associated easements that are going with it, we are undertaking not to park on any of the areas that would encumber that access as well. During construction, what I was planning to do was temporarily fencing both lots. And then we could create a whole construction lay down area, site for parking, site for equipment and vehicles and everything like that. So there'd be traffic traversing that, but we wouldn't be parking anywhere near it. There'll be times when we've got heavy loads coming in, the transformers and the switchgear, and we would work with the city and the police to schedule those times outside of rush hours, outside of times of school pickups, those kinds of things. If necessary, we'll do it weekends and that kind of.
I don't see a problem. If you do impact that road, would you make it better than it is right now?
We would restore it to the condition it's in now.
Exactly. That's what I'm talking about. No, no, it's a dirt road. It's not a, not a superhighway. I understand that. It's just if it gets impacted, it needs to go back to at least what it is.
Yeah, I mean, we will strive at all times to be a good neighbor and we'll do whatever we need to do to make it right.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay. All right. At this time, I'd ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? This being either the subdivision or the site plan. Seeing none, I'd ask, is anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Okay, seeing none. At this point, I'd ask the board, do we have any further questions for the applicant or staff during the hearing?
Just one for the staff.
Go ahead, Ed.
In sometimes conditions when people, companies are working close or nearby, this access road would have been nice if the city could have asked for something to help or improve that condition of that road. Would have been a nice idea if we could have asked them to, because their site's right there. Would that have been a possibility to, to ask for a donation or something to help out that road, do better access to it? Just improvements.
This is a kind of a joint effort by both parties to try to relocate the substation to create a larger development parcel for the city to turn over to, you know, for another development. That development would probably then make the improvements that you're talking about.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board during the hearing? Okay, at this time, I'll close the hearing and move to the public meeting. All right, so we have essentially the substation relocation. We had a few questions that folks went through. I don't have anything outstanding on my end. Anybody have any discussion items for the meeting?
No, just on the, we're talking about the subdivision.
Well, at first, yeah, let's take the subdivision.
So on that, I would just ask in number five, we put the same language in, we just put in.
Okay.
I'll just say that ahead of time.
All right, anybody willing to make a motion? Start with the subdivision, number two.
I'm willing to make that motion. I would make a motion to approve new business number two subdivision, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO, section one ninety dash one thirty-eight G, with a total of six stipulations. The first two stipulations, both being waiver requests, and both to read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then I would leave stipulations three and four as written in the staff report. I would amend stipulation number five to add a new sentence at the end indicating that if the applicant in the engineering department cannot satisfactorily resolve the comments from the city engineer, the plan would revert to the planning board for further action. And then stipulation number six to read is written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve with the stipulations as stated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second on it? Second by Mr. Pucci. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. All right, so we have new business number three site plan. Anybody want to make a motion on that? Mr. Varley?
I'll go ahead and make a motion here as well. That motion is to approve new business number three site plan, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO, section one ninety dash one forty-six D and section one ninety dash twenty-three F. And that approval will include five stipulations. All is written in the staff report.
Okay, so you have that motion to approve as stated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Pucci. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, thanks. Okay, so we are now moving on to new business site plan, case number four. Public Service Company of New Hampshire, DBA Eversource, application and acceptance of proposed site plan to renovate existing work center and construct a new fourteen thousand five hundred square foot garage. This property is located three seventy Amherst Street. Do you have a motion as to whether this application is ready to take jurisdiction? We have a motion by Mr. Pucci to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Okay. Applicant, we're ready to go.
Hello again.
Number four.
Nick Golen, licensed engineer, senior project manager with T.F. Moran, forty-eight Constitution Drive, Bedford, New Hampshire. We're here in regards to a somewhat similar project where we have an antiquated structure that's in need of some renovation, that being the existing Nashua Area Work Center that was originally built in the, I think, early, late nineteen, or mid, late nineteen fifties. This is a location where you see line trucks distributed throughout the region in response to either emergency needs or standard repairs. What they're looking to do is expand and renovate the existing building such that they would add a fourteen thousand five hundred square foot garage and then take the existing garage that which they have and convert it to office space. This isn't so much a project in that we're looking to add significant employees. This is more of a relocation of their needs to a more strategic location. So it's great that it's in Nashua. There's always different places they could have looked, but they've decided to work from their existing facility. Now, just relative to the overall site plan, now this is tax map G, lot ninety-three, zoned park industrial as well as mixed use. The lot's comprised of just under nine acres, about four and a half, which we will be impacting. If I can, I'll just walk you through some of the various site components as best I can here. Picture quality's not great. So when we think about layout, you know, we have some site constraints that being Cotton Road, which runs almost in parallel to Amherst Street, that being our property line. The Abart Street right away extends to approximately here on the site plan. And then we have an unnamed road associated with our neighbors that wraps around the facility. There was some question as to, I think we had two utilities that actually crossed onto their property for connection. We are going to be relocating those since we would need their permission to do so and we have not received that. So relative to the application that's before you, all the improvements that we are proposing will be on this subject lot. Relative to the layout of the facility, it's somewhat consistent with the existing, that being here is the existing office space. Parking was located along the front and sides of the building. It'll be redistributed such that we end up with approximately, I think, thirty visitor parking spaces, fifty-nine employee parking spaces, and then another additional forty-six spaces, which is really for the company vehicles, these are your line trucks, your cable trucks, your meter readers, you name it, the various vehicles that need to be stored on site. So you'd have employees coming in, parking in a designated area and then taking that company vehicle for its dedicated purpose. So this office space would remain and be refurbished. This is the area of the existing garage. This is the area in which they're essentially gutting it down to the superstructure and then rebuilding it from within. In doing so, they'll obviously need to have a new garage. So this will be a little bit of a phased construction. I would anticipate to see that a portion of the office space being renovated interior. The garage would need to be built, obviously, before that we could renovate the existing garage. Just take us a little walk around the site. I mentioned the visitor parking along the front. We have employee parking along the east side and then more along the west. You'll see that there is a gated portion of the facility. So that gate runs east to west here and then east to west here, which cortains off the rear portion of the site, which is the access to the garage, their pole storage, any other materials that would be stored within the yard that are required to be secure. Same fence design is what we looked at with the previous project. It's an eight-foot chain link fence with a one-foot barbed wire arm. These would be rolling gates that would. work off a loop detector internal to the site, so they have the appropriate access. The size of the stockyard, which is really this portion of the southerly side of the site, is sized very similar to what exists today. So essentially, in making room for this garage, we've had to displace the storage yard and also made a few nice site improvements in the process. I had mentioned the pole storage, that's located in a very similar location to as it exists today. Dumpsters would be located as necessary throughout the facility. They have, you know, recycled dumpsters, then they're typical. I spoke earlier to utilities, so we'll flip to the utility plan as we talk through these various components. We've got everything we need in the immediate vicinity. We have municipal water, we have gas, we have sewer. Electric lines would be relocated underground in conformance with the site plan regulations. Rainage would be addressed in a couple of formats. Right now, we have two subsurface chambers, which would take the runoff from the front portions of the site as well as roof runoff. That provides the opportunity to be pretreated prior to recharging to the groundwater with overflows provided to the municipal system for our larger year storm events. All of our systems have been designed to the minimum, not only city, but also state requirements, as this will require an alteration of terrain permit. Now, to that extent, we are working on some design revisions for these stormwater systems, reviewed with the director of AOT Ridge Mock just yesterday. And we are envisioning this front subsurface chamber will go away, and there'll be a bio retention area or rain garden located in the front of the site instead. And this subsurface chamber will be turned into an ADS water quality unit. And a lot of this had to do with what's the best way we can treat our stormwater at an existing facility. We've got existing site constraints being the depth of the existing municipal system, as well as depths of existing seasonal high groundwater. So we will see a couple of revisions to this, and it does actually tie in very nicely with some of the city comments that we received in making those changes to those systems. The other system that you're going to see is a bio retention area located here in the southwest and southeast quadrants. If you're not familiar with what a bio retention area is, it's kind of mother's nature's way of treating your stormwater. It's an engineered soil between 18 and 24 inches thick, designed for certain microbial activity such that certain pollutants are removed. You'll have certain plants that can be saturated for extended time periods, and those plants do a good job in removing heavy metals that may otherwise be located in your stormwater prior to it having the opportunity to recharge to the ground below. In the case of this basin in the southwest corner, because there is no real good discharge point, we've designed it such that right now there's a foot of freeboard during a hundred-year storm event. So that way, we're not worried about a discharge onto the adjacent road owned by the Abarter. It's an overdesign, but we thought it practical given the site conditions. What else we want to talk about? Site lighting. So we did include a site lighting plan within our package. Through an error of our own, the photometrics are not shown fully, so we'll make sure we correct that with the resuminal. We had all the notes of where the illumination point should be, but it didn't provide the luminaire values. As clarification, there will be no light spillage onto adjacent properties consistent with the site plan regulations. We'll be using LED fixtures that'll either be wall-mounted or pole-mounted, and these will be full cut-off night sky compliant fixtures. What else should we talk about? How about landscaping? It's always a fun one as well. One of the things you'll notice on our plan is the focus of our landscaping. It's primarily located along public visibility points, that being Amherst Street and Cotton Road. You'll see there's a healthy mix of shade trees, being Armstrong and red maples, plane tree, as well as some more medium-sized flowering crab apples. And then providing some variation in the height of those with various shrubs that'll be intermingled, as well as some different types of grasses. Provides a nice entrance experience to the facility, but you won't see that at the rear of the yard. This is more the utilitarian area. Adding additional landscaping to try and break up paved surfaces presents a hazard to the individuals performing their work in that area. So the area that is behind the secure fence, that's not where you're going to see a lot of landscaping. You do see some in the form of the bio retention area. Those are the plantings that, again, helping treat our stormwater. So there is a spot of color there, but really the primary focus for our landscaping is along Amherst Street. By Ken, I'm going to flip through now to our architectural plans, noting that relative to the site plans that are before you, no waivers are requested. So from that standpoint, we came through clean. Dave Udlzman, who is the project architect, is with us. If there are specific questions in regards to the architecture, I will defer to him, as I'm a civil engineer and buildings aren't quite my thing. But in general, it's going to match the building that's out there. It's going to be refurbished, it's going to look cleaner, it's going to look newer. We'll have our nice EverSource placard along the front of the building to make sure it's obviously identified correctly. Updated building materials that'll be more suitable for cost-effective construction, as well as energy efficiency. So I'll be short on that portion of the dialogue, and if there's other questions related to the architecture, we'll invite Dave up to speak to it. So relative to our presentation, that's it for the Nashua Area Work Center.
Okay. Questions from the board, Mr. Weber?
You said there would be dumpsters throughout the location. Are those all going to be enclosed?
Will they be enclosed? They're roll-off dumpsters that they utilize. They will be screened appropriately relative to their location on site, either through existing vegetation or other site elements.
So no visitors that come in will be able to see them?
No, they'll be in a secure location that would not be from...
Because you just said they were going to be dropped...
Yeah, I should have been a little more specific. I think I caught myself as I was saying that.
That's why I asked the question.
That's a good question. Relative to its location, I think there's two locations. I think we'd be most practical located in the secure area. One located through here, or otherwise located at the rear access point to the garage.
Okay. Landscaping.
Yes, sir.
On the northeast above your retention areas, is there any chance for trees to be put there?
Not up there.
Over on the northeast section below the, I think the, in... Close to unnamed road word?
Down here?
Yeah, right up there, a little higher.
In this section right here?
Right there.
Yep. Yes, it's a possibility.
The reason I'm asking for it is because pavement puts out a lot of heat.
Understood.
And vegetation, and trees especially negate that or help alleviate that. And then one on the other side, close to where it goes straight where it joins, yeah, right there, in that area. And then if, I don't know if you can do it along the fencing there?
Unfortunately, there, it wouldn't be practical. One of the things we have to be concerned about is the ability to fence hop. We don't want to put especially a large, more ornamental type tree in close proximity. We could look at something in those two locations that would be more practical that wouldn't otherwise be seen as a safety hazard.
Now, on your fencing, do you have that, above that top of the fences, it got the...
It has a barbed wire arm.
So that would not be a good idea then, because somebody could, if years from now the tree got certain height, they could jump the fence.
That's correct.
Be not good.
So that's one of those site considerations. And again, why you see that nice landscaping out in front, but not in the areas where we have the fence.
It really isn't practical to put trees there then.
It'd be preferable not to.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree totally. The retention area that you have, can you go over just how they're tested to make sure that they are, work properly?
Doing what they're supposed to, certainly. So it's actually, it's typically a requirement of the alteration of train bureau when you design one of these types of systems, that the infiltration rate of the system has to be tested after it's installed and has to be within certain parameters. So within our stormwater management report, we define a certain velocity at which stormwater has the opportunity to percolate through the soil. The contractor has to replicate that. So there'll be an engineered soil that's designed by either someone from TF Moran or otherwise to recreate that infiltration rate that we've specified, which is five to 10 minutes per inch. It'd be tested in the field and then verified by the engineer, and would be likely a condition of our permit approval.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I just have a couple of architectural questions, so.
Come on up, Dave.
Can you bring the elevations back up?
Thank you.
Thanks. Could you just, with regard to the elevation that faces Amherst Street? That's really the... Can you just kind of review the finished materials?
Absolutely.
Existing versus new, and like the colors and, you know, of the glazing and metal panel and things like that?
Absolutely. First of all, my name's David Udlzman, I'm the project architect, Udlzman Associates, 161 Federal Hill Road, Hollis, New Hampshire, for the record. So the existing building is an older split-face masonry type of product. The building was built in two phases, so to the easterly side of the building, to about this point here. It's a slightly different block material than to the right side. Those, that material, the variation in texture is the same, the texture is the same, the variation color is just slight from one to another. Our intent is to actually maintain that existing masonry on the outside of the building. It's in good condition, it's actually a very nice-looking product, it's an earth tone, and I think we can actually complement that. So in the scope of the renovations that we're talking about for the outside here, one of our goals was to basically stick with what we have for existing masonry openings, not have to make major changes, so we have patching and cutting that doesn't look appropriate to it. In the infill, these areas here, the large window pieces, those do have masonry up to about a three-foot elevation. The window framing system is old, it's out of date, it's not a thermal insulated system. We're going to take out the entire window frame, the entire glass system. We're going to cut that masonry all the way down to the floor surface and come in and replace that with a new thermally broken aluminum, black aluminum frame system. The black aluminum, I think, is a nice complement to the tan tones that we have on the building today. And then new, energy-efficient glazing inside of that. What we're looking at then is, in this area here, right now, this is kind of a good idea, the line of the building. It's flat along here, the tower exists today, just as it is, and then continues flat. Here and here, on these two ends, are existing entrances that were done with a diagonal masonry side to them and kind of an overhanging cantilever roof on it. Our intent is to actually take off those. We're salvaging that masonry for some of the miscellaneous patching that we have to do inside of the building to fill in some vent locations, and then creating these two new white metal-faced panels to add some variation to the facade. Give us a nice, you know, breakup and articulation of that facade across the front. So we've got the tan split-face masonry, the black aluminum frames, the white for Christmas on the two entrances, and also just kind of picking that up across the top of the large kind of tower piece here, and then of course, the EverSource logo on the top here.
Okay, and is that a lit logo?
We actually haven't discussed it or had that determination at this point in time. Today, the sign is, I believe, lit from the side of the building. We can illuminate that from above, so we're not throwing any light away from the building.
Okay, all right.
They're not lit letters.
Not lit letters.
But that, as in, they'll be lit from the outside of, not internally illuminated.
If they are lit, they're going to be sort of from the outside.
Correct.
Okay. And then, any rooftop equipment, is there intent of screening?
So we are proposing, we will be replacing the entire HVAC system in this building. It is antiquated at this point in time. We are proposing to use a variable refrigerant flow system. It's an all-electric system for the electric company. It's a high-efficiency system with great variability capacity to it. The units for that will be ground-mounted back behind the fence line in an area where they're not readily visible. Those are very quiet units too, so they operate very quietly. There will be some energy recovery ventilators located on the roof. These are generally smaller units that, you know, don't exceed 30 inches, 36 inches in height. We can address any proper screening that we need to. We will probably end up with one somewhere behind this main entrance, and one somewhere behind this main entrance, and then one further on the back garage roof, which is the roof that you're seeing back over here, which is going to be not really visible from 101A anymore.
Okay, all right. All right, thanks. Any other questions for the architect? Appreciate it. Any other questions for the applicant from the board? At this point, I ask, is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Plans, I should say. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask the board one last time. Any further questions during the hearing for the applicant or staff? Hearing none, go ahead and...
I'm officially on the board's adding the package tonight. You did receive engineering comments. So we should make them a stipulation of approval. Thank you.
Correct, okay, thanks. So I'll move to the meeting. So we have in front of us the two, excuse me, the one site plan. Number four, you know, to me, it looks like a pretty good upgrade of the existing site. Kind of an antiquated building at the moment, and there's some, I think, attractive upgrades to the facade, which is nice. I don't really have any concerns at this point, didn't hear a lot during the discussions, but welcome any other further discussions folks might have or questions internally. Good? Okay. All right, anybody willing to make a motion? All right, a reminder that there is a new engineering memo that we would want to add as a stipulation.
Sure.
So, Mr. Pucci?
So the... Reference new business site plan number four. We make a determination that the plan meets the required outline in site plan NRO 19146D and 19023F. And we choose to approve the plan with the following eight stipulations. The seven stipulations that are listed in the staff recommendations as they are written, and an additional stipulation that the engineering feedback is now received by us, and the standard stipulation that prior to signing the plan, all comments and email from Joe Mendola, street construction engineer dated July 10, 2019, I think it's July 10, yes. Shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department. Any dispute between the applicant and the engineering department will be brought back to the planning board for determination. That's my motion.
Okay, so we have that motion as to approve with the eight stipulations as stated by Mr. Pucci. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None? Motion passes. Thanks. Okay, moving on. We have case number five. This is new business site plan. Applicant Fabreys Corp., U-Haul Corp. of Eastern Massachusetts. This is an application acceptance of proposed amendment to NR 1314 to renovate an existing one-story industrial building. This is located at 476 in El Amherst Street. So I would ask the board, if anybody had a chance to review this application and like to make a motion to take jurisdiction. So moved by Mr. Pucci. Any second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, so new business number five applicant.
Whoops, whoiz.
Doesn't like you.
Yeah, it doesn't, for some reason.
Alright, Lucy, is a thumb drive in?
Yes.
Alright.
It only goes in one way.
Oh, yeah.
I tried the top, let's try, try the second, I think I tried the second too.
Try that.
See what you got. There you go.
Alright.
Okay.
We just needed a girl.
That's right.
No problem, thanks.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Earl Blatchford, I'm Senior Project Manager with Hayner Swanson. We're located at 3 Congress Street here in Nashua, representing the applicant, U-Haul of Eastern Massachusetts. Also with me tonight is Scott Chase, who is President of U-Haul of Eastern Massachusetts. The site before you tonight is located at 476 Amherst Street. It's this long parcel right in here. It's on, located on the south side of Amherst Street, right next to, this is Sunnyside Acura. And it consists of, currently consists of two lots. Lot 116 is in the front, and when we started this project, it was owned by Fabreze. And this parcel in the back, which is identified as Lot 23, was owned by a different Fabreze entity under Micro Development Lab, but basically the same property owner. Since recently, U-Haul did close a purchase of, of the property, and they're in the process of, in conjunction with their attorney Morgan Hollis, of consolidating the piece, which is, which our site plan is, is prefaced on, it being a single lot. It's, the total lot area is about seven and a quarter acres. It's zoned park industrial with a mixed-use overlay for the, primarily. There's a small area right in this corner next to the Acura site, which is zoned highway business, but it's, it's a very minor part of the site. The front, two, two and a quarter acres of the site is presently developed. It's the former Fabreze building, it's currently vacant, but they built, it's a one-story, nineteen thousand four hundred and fifty square foot industrial manufacturing building. It was built by Fabreze circa 1959. There's a single entrance drive to the site, there's associated parking and loading on this part of the building. The site is presently served by municipal water, sewer, natural gas, and power and communications, all fed from Amherst Street. The budding properties are, there are some small commercial properties across on the northerly side of Amherst Street. As I said before, this is Sunnyside Acura, this is a multi-tenant industrial commercial user, this is multi-tenant industrial building primarily owned by, it's owned by Fleer, and they're the major tenant in that. And then beyond is the railroad tracks, and Nashville Airport is back here. As I said, the, the rear of the parcel is, is predominantly wooded area. There's a small, at the very back, which is part of kind of the overall drainage system for this industrial subdivision from way back, there is a man-made swale at the very back. It's, it's considered jurisdictional, it's about ten feet wide, and it's considered jurisdictional wetland. It's the only wetland on the property, and we aren't doing anything to disturb that. So, that's basically the overview of the existing property. What we're proposing is, what we're proposing is to renovate the existing building without enlarging it. Basically, just update inside and out. And it's going to be used for about four thousand square feet of the building will be showroom, office, and storage for the combined truck leasing and self-storage rental. And then the remaining, about fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty square feet of the existing building is going to be small self-storage units. Also proposed in, behind the existing building is a new two-story, seventy-six thousand square foot self-storage building. And the, basically, the existing parking area in the front is getting a, is getting completely remade, and then there's additional parking and truck maneuvering in the rear of the lot. We're maintaining the existing entrance drive at the same location as it is, as it's been for quite some time. We went, we had one zoning issue that came up, it was kind of a technicality. On May 14th, we went to the zoning board and requested a use variance to allow up to twenty-five percent of the use to be the truck leasing, and the remainder would be the self-storage. It's kind of a quirk in the regulation which necessitate, necessitated the use variance. It was granted unanimously back on May 14th, so that got the use issues squared away for us. Our plan, also one other feature, back in here is our stormwater management area. It's a wet pond facility designed per state and city standards. And our site plan has had a thorough city department review for traffic, fire, stormwater, landscaping, site lighting, et cetera. There are a few stipulations that are in your staff report that would be part of, of your deliberations and, and approval process, and we're prepared to address those. There are, there are two items which, associated with the plan, which would normally be a waiver process, but because of the mixed over, mixed-use overlay district on this, it's really part of your deliberation. We have prepared a site suitability report, which is a requirement, and is part of your package. The, the two issues are parking. Based on the parking table, based on building square footage, this site needs one hundred and nineteen parking spaces, but because of the nature of the build, of the, of the use, self-storage and truck leasing, it's a very low traffic generator, very, you know, kind of infrequent customer parking use. And a lot of the customers coming for self-storage go back to the self-storage building, and they, they, they don't come in, you know, in groups. So, really, this type of a site needs much less parking than the square footage would indicate. We are proposing to have sixteen car spaces and thirteen truck parking spaces, which is appropriate for this use, and it's, it's really, it's based, U-Haul has got vast experience in this, they know what this type of site needs for parking. And so, they, we've, we're showing the parking that they deem is, is appropriate for the site. The second issue is the building architectural standards. The existing building that's getting renovated is a flat-roof industrial building. As I said, it's getting both facade updates, and the, the entire interior of the building is getting completely upgraded to, with modern systems, and obviously to fit the, the new use. They, the rear building is, obviously, it's all self-storage. It's kind of a, it's a specialized kind of building, and those buildings are always flat-roof, in my experience. The other aspect of it is, U-Haul has a national brand, and they have a lot of their building features, signage, color schemes, and architectural features are part of a branded look that they've developed and refined over the years, but this is their current standard that they're using on their buildings. So, those are, as I said, those are two items, and we actually did submit a waiver letter, and then we were informed by planning, no, you don't need to do that, you just need to address it under the mixed-use portion of the regulation, so. There's those two items for the board to consider as well. The only permit that we have up at DES for this is an alteration of terrain permit. We're disturbing about two hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet with all of the site disturbance. That, we anticipate, we've had review comments, a few, not, not too many, we're addressing those, and anticipate that permit to be in hand by the end of the month. So, that's pretty much the overview. Be happy to answer any questions that the board or anyone in the audience has, and anything I can answer, refer to Scott Chase.
Could you just put the elevations?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to move to the...
Just, just step through those quickly?
Yeah, so this is the existing, the former Fabreze building. This is the front elevation through here, you've got the U-Haul sign, they're adding glass through here. If you're familiar with the building, the existing building is, the front is a brick facade, and then the sides in the rear are all CMU block, fairly, you know, plain, neutral color, and kind of reflective of the age of the building. So, this is the easterly side of the building. This is the rear of the building here, and then this is the westerly side facing Sunnyside Acura.
Okay. So, those, those orange sort of panels on the front, those are not actually doors?
They're faux, they're faux doors. It, it's kind of, it's a way to kind of pull in some of their traditional, you know, garage door, but they're faux doors. It's, it's a way of kind of breaking up the massing of the building a little bit, and as I said, it's, it's part of a branding package with their color schemes.
Okay.
So, that's kind of what the effect of, but they are faux doors, they are not, they are not overhead actual functioning overhead doors. They're just panels on the building facade.
Yep, and then the elevations of the back building there?
Of the back building, so again, this is the end, this would be the end facing Amherst Street, behind, behind the existing building.
Right, so that's, and that's two stories, so that...
That's two stories, and that's why this is up along the top, so that there'll be some visibility over the existing building from Amherst Street. And then this is the, really, this is the customer service area. And again, this is all, there are some overhead doors, customer service doors here, overhead doors here. But basically, people unload inside the building, it doesn't have the exterior overhead doors, with the exception of the customer service doors. There aren't the individual units on the exterior of the building, as you see on some buildings. So, this is the, again, is the westerly side, this is the back of the building. There is a fire escape stairs here, just for life safety code requirements at the back of the building. And then this is the westerly length of the building, which is where the fire lane is. It's, you know, the, the, you know, pretty much inactive portion of the building. But this is where the, the fire lane runs by, this portion of the building.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, I forgot to scroll to those.
Yeah, that's okay. Other questions for Earl, while he's up here, Mr. Pucci?
Yeah, could you go back to the picture you had up there most of the time, the drawing?
The aerial?
Yeah.
Or the, or the...
No, the, the picture, no, no, the picture that you had up, that picture.
Yeah, the rendered plan, yep.
So, I'm just going to refer to it as north, southeast, and west, because it's easier when I'm talking, okay? So, it's the south side of the new building where the entrance is, right in the middle there?
No, you're saying plan, as far as the plan goes?
Yeah, when I'm looking at that picture, it's the, it's the bottom...
Yeah, okay, so north is basically, you know, it's this way, but if you...
Let's just pretend that north is very top.
Okay.
So, I can speak without thinking about it.
Gotcha.
So, the south, the south part of the building, in the middle is where the doors go in, where people go into the building.
The, the new building, you're saying?
Yes.
Yes, the customer service area is right in here.
Okay, so that's two levels, obviously, it's a two-story building?
It's a two-story building.
How many units are in there? How many storage units?
Do, I, I'll defer that to Scott, because I think the mix, they're small units, there are quite a few.
Good evening, my name's Scott Chase, U-Haul Company of Eastern Massachusetts, 6 Merrill Street, Salisbury, Mass. I'm sorry, what was the question? Oh, we'd have to look at the plan, but I believe it's roughly seven hundred, six hundred and fifty in the new building, and fifty to sixty in the existing building.
Okay. So, Fire Marshal says you can only have seven spaces in that front, right, and that's what you have, no more than seven. With six hundred and fifty units, you're, you're satisfied that seven parking spaces is adequate?
I, I believe so, yes, from our experience, and people show up in a truck to unload into their unit, and then if they visit to drop something off or pick something up, they're pretty quick in their car, and they're not there again till they're moving out. So, you know, on a busy end of the month weekend, there may be seven customers there at the same time. Typically, there's not more than one or two in the storage.
So, ordinarily, I wouldn't care, you know, if people just stick their car against the building, but the Fire Marshal seems to care, so I'm, I'm wondering, what, what do you do for the rest of that south facade to prevent people from parking there when those seven spaces are full? Is there something done there that cars will not park there?
Other than no parking signs and us communicating that, no.
Okay. And you said there were about fifty in the other building, the other building has more parking though.
Correct, well, the other building has the retail showroom where customers would be coming and make reservations, do the rental conference.
Where do they go in to use the storage units on the front building?
On the, for reference of how you mentioned it on the south side?
They go in the same, same side?
Same side, there's a, there's a single drive-in load-unload, there's, like I said, there's only fifty or sixty units in there.
Okay.
There'd be enough room for two vehicles in there at a time to load or unload.
Gotcha. And my last question is, there, there's no outside storage at this site, right? Everything is internal?
Correct.
Okay, that, that's all I have, thanks.
Can you just, while you're up, explain like the process of, I mean, this is sort of newer kind of storage than we have in town, so. So, the, the customers actually show up, they drive into the building?
Yes, so, our, our existing buildings in town were built back in the seventies and eighties, and this is to replace the one over on Northwest Boulevard. I mean, we'd still keep that property, but we're not going to have an office there anymore. But the way we do it now, yeah, is you drive in, there's a set of sliding doors, there's carts where they would load into the elevator if they were upstairs, or the hallways in the downstairs, and all that loading-unloading is in an interior area with an overhead door.
And just, so, this isn't, Earl Blatchford, this isn't cold storage, this is climate-controlled.
Correct.
Conditioned space.
Okay.
So, it's kind of the, there's a lot of it going on right now.
Yeah, yeah.
It's kind of the new, the new prototype for self-storage.
Okay, Mr. Pucci?
So, how many cars can pull in at the same time when they're loading and unloading?
I believe in the front building, there's room for two vehicles to load and unload, and the back building, there's multiple locations, there's a couple interior for most vehicles, and then if it's a larger truck, there's one exterior, they'd back up to the dock.
Do they, are they behind the parking spaces, or are they in a separate place?
They're adjacent to. If we could look at that elevation again, I believe it would...
It's where the overhead doors are. So, right, so the overhead doors are...
So, that's part of the, that's, that's behind some of the spaces? I'm just belaboring the parking thing.
This is where the customer entrances are here, and this is, this is yours trash. This is, it's your refuse pickup door, isn't it, here?
Okay, so they're not in front of the spa, they're not...
That's correct, yeah.
In blocking spaces, the spaces are separate from those doors? Okay.
Can you, can you just review for my sake the, the elevation of... Can you, can you just review for my sake the, the elevation of the, the second story that's facing Amherst Street?
Sure.
Earl, can you kind of flip to that one again? So, is that similar, um, yeah, it's like to the right, right there on the screen a little bit, right? So, that visual of looking, are, are you actually looking at storage inside, or is that like a, sort of a-
Yes, what we're looking to do is because this sits so far back off the road, and the elevation is down low, is, the same reason why we have the faux doors on the front, is to identify what the building is.
Yeah.
So these would be windows with existing rooms behind there, you know, so it's a five-foot wide hallway, so they would just see into that section.
Right, is that similar to the one, there's one in Woburn, right, like-
Yes, yeah, we try, all of our new locations we do.
Okay, yeah, okay, so that one's illuminated at night, all night, is that the intent?
That one's on the side of ninety-five, so.
Yeah, but is that, what's the intent for illuminating that?
The, the lights inside are all on motion sensors-
Okay.
LED and less than customer, I mean, there's a few security lights that will stay on in the building-
Right.
But, other than that, they always don't light up unless someone walks down.
Okay, so there's no intent to light that twenty-four, seven, 'cause that one on ninety-five, it's, it's on all the time, I can see, I mean, maybe that works for you, but.
I mean, we try to fit in, be good neighbors, so I mean, on the side of ninety-five's a little different then.
Yeah, okay. Other questions? I'll give Mr. Varley a shot here first.
Yeah, I just, I just had a quick question. See that there's the, uh, the service road that's at the, at the back of the site? Um, I'm assuming is that for stormwater maintenance?
Yes, that's for access to the stormwater area, was a, it was, um, we, we added that from our initial submittal, uh, at the request of, uh, of the engineering department.
And just, it, it may be on the plan and I've just missed it, but is there, is that gated?
No.
It's not?
No. No, we don't, we don't feel in need unless-
I'm not sure the area you're talking about in.
Yeah, it's at, on the stormwater-
Oh.
-area, uh, in the back.
Okay.
Didn't get there, I don't know.
Yeah, it's just, you have to get to the, uh, site plan, yeah?
Yeah, let me just minimize this a little bit, so it scrolls a little faster.
There you go.
So, yeah, so we, basically, we'll, we'll have, uh, mountable curb right here, there's a, there's a break in the guardrail, um, and it's twelve-foot wide, it's basically just meant for a, you know, whatever, pickup truck, a backhoe, whatever needs to go back there to do, um, you know, it'll be pure, it'll mainly be inspection work, so someone will go in there with a small vehicle, or they can even walk back there.
But, but there'll be curbing, there'll be something to indicate to a customer that's coming back there that's, that they're not supposed to drive back there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Pucci?
So, the, the grayish area around the drawing is all pavement, right, that, that's, everything that's gray on that picture is-
Everything, yeah, everything out here and this-
So, if I'm looking at the, what I'm calling the south side of the new building, is there any reason why there couldn't be some landscaping ten or fifteen feet out from the building where the parking is not, where there's no parking or doors to go in?
If I could answer that, it's not the engineer. It's a really narrow lot, and, you know, we were taking into account turning radiuses for a large truck to, to back up there, so, I know on the plan it looks like there's plenty of room, but it's really not. Uh, Earl can probably speak to that better, but that's-
Yeah, a lot, a lot of that pavement is, um, there's not a lot of parking out here, but there are accommodations for maneuvering of, of, uh, moving trucks, um, and, uh, other delivery trucks, so we need to have adequate room for that, and if you start putting in some landscaping, it's gonna make that more difficult. They need to maneuver and back up to those overhead doors, be able to access those.
And that, that's gonna be affected if you come out ten feet from the face of the building? That's gonna impact that? The reason I'm asking is because, I'll just tell you why you're here, so it's easy to address, rather than when we're discussing it. I have real concern about seven spaces for six hundred and fifty units, I think on a weekend, I know you're a professional and you, you do this business and I don't, but that doesn't seem adequate to me. So, I, what I am thinking is that when the peak times of your business, people are just gonna be parking against the building, waiting for those spaces to come up. And that only concerns me because it concerns the Fire Marshal, 'cause he, he, in this notice that he put in, it says, please confirm that the two-story building has seven parking spaces, no other parking will be allowed in the front left side of the two-story building. So, I mean, they're going out of their way to point that out, which I don't always see on these. So I would like to come up with a way to assure that people won't do that, that's what I'm trying to think through. So, if we were to require something like that, if that was the will of the board, can you make that work, or are you saying you can't make it work?
I know the Fire Marshal wants access, you know, he wants to keep the face of the building clear, and that, that was, that was the point of his comment, was, uh, he didn't want any parking on the fire lane or around the outside edges of the pavement, and he wanted access to the face of the building.
And that area is showing all crosshatched on there?
Right.
Yeah, well, they can have access to the front of the building if it's just grass, or if it's just a curbed-off thing, anything they drive can drive right over that. I'm just trying to come up with a solution that is acceptable to you if we decide we need one. We may not, nobody might agree with me, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, in my mind, in the scenario, and, and again, I would defer to, to Scott with, as far as how these sites function and what their needs are, but-
Okay.
If you put a ten-foot, say, ten-foot landscape strip, it, it doesn't solve the problem that you're saying, if someone's inclined to park over there where they're not supposed to, you, you're just pushing it out further and, and kind of narrowing the maneuvering area.
Okay.
And that's kind of my take on it.
Yeah, that's, that's not unreasonable.
So, I, I think it's, I think it's a manage, you know, I think it's a site management issue, it's just something they need to monitor, and if they see it as being a problem, they need to, you know, be proactive and-
Okay, thank you.
And on that light, what is the monitoring, like, what's the outside, is it outdoor, what's the security concept for the site?
Well, I mean, the site outside and inside would be covered with security cameras, all the buildings are alarmed with card swipes, so the customer only has access to their area. So if their room is on the first floor on the left side, say, that's the only area they can get in, they can't get in the elevator and get up to the second floor. Um, the alarm disarms when the customer checks in, and arms when they check out. Uh, the lighting, I believe Earl has something on that, but it would be whatever for safety and meet code, I'm not sure if they answered all your questions on that, but-
Yeah, so there's cameras all the way there on the outside-
Yes, yeah.
And stuff like that, so you're- Able, and is it like remotely monitored, do you, how, how staffed is the site?
Well, it's gonna allow us to, to hire eight to ten people, going from the small location we have on Northwest Boulevard, where we don't have storage there at the time, we barely have a showroom there, um, so we, we are gonna be adding some jobs there, which would be, you know, custodian jobs, customer service jobs, assistant manager jobs, storage manager, um, the surveillance is not only on a DVR, it's remotely monitored by, we have a central alarm room that constantly watches the alarms and calls us if anything's going on.
Okay, all right.
Yes, um, I, I just, I thought I heard you say that there will be, like, hash marks painted around the outside of the building, is that what I heard you say, or?
Yes, in the, in the area, um, that we were discussing, uh, we've got a, basically a fire lane painting-
Right.
We, so we've got it crosshatched and, and labeled "Fire Lane," so, and there'll be no parking signs, uh, wall-mounted, no parking signs, and then we have no parking signs, uh, on the outside of the fire lane along the back of the building, uh, right along here, and then, uh, the Fire Marshal requested some similar signs along this, uh, along this curb line here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ed?
Um, what kind of outside lighting are you gonna be using? Are they gonna be LED down-facing, so that they're-
Yes, yes, it's gonna be LED lighting, uh, full cutoff, uh, dark sky compliant, uh, meeting the, the city, uh, regulations, and that's been reviewed, um, and we didn't get any comments back on that, that was all reviewed and approved.
Okay, and, just, let Pucci know, um, I, about a month ago, I visited one of these sites because I was helping out at the U-Haul, and it was on a Sunday, and that's one of the days that everybody's just wants to go there to people. And we just had some car, we had one other car that parked, and the person was, stayed in the car, and it was out of the way, and we had a truck, and it was easy as all get out, but there was like, one other person that was just before us and they left, and we were there by ourselves as far as putting stuff there, only customer, but there was staff there too, and then plenty of, um, gated and plenty of security there.
Other questions of the applicant? Okay, all right, um, this time, we're all set with you for the time being, thanks. Uh, at this time, I'd ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Seeing none, I'd ask anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. Sure, come on up, uh, make sure you state your name and address for the record, thanks.
Peter Schaefer, fifteen E Street. I just have a question, this is, you have, how many employees are gonna be there, and where do they park? Since you guys talk so much about parking, and there's not much parking, where do they park?
Okay, thanks, we'll have the applicant address that. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of the plan, or have a question? No, okay, at this point, I have to have the applicant could come address, uh, in particular employee parking, and how many employees at a time?
So, our existing manager on Northwest Boulevard, um, is gonna be the manager of this store, her son works for, which travels with him, um, she has a couple employees that take public transportation or ride together, so there's not a lot of employee parking, but basically, we would use what we have, the, uh, truck shunting area behind the existing building, um, that, kind of, if a customer rents a truck, we would ask them to park where they took the truck from, the same would be with the employee that would park behind there.
Okay, all right. Other questions from the board? Yeah, okay, all right, thanks. Uh, any other questions from the audience? All right, hearing none, uh, last chance to board, any questions during the hearing for staff or anybody else?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna move to the, uh, public meeting. So, we've got basically the site plan here, number five, um, gone through sort of the elevations and then the function here, there are eight stipulations from staff on this, so you may want to take a look at those. Anybody have any thoughts or discussion items, Mr. Pucci?
Just, I would be inclined to add a stipulation that no outside storage can occur on this site, and that shouldn't impact them since they're not planning on it.
Okay. Okay, I assume you're meaning like RVs and that kind of stuff, you know, I'm seeing-
Yes, and I've just had past experience with, not U-Haul, just storage facilities in general, where, before you know it, boats and, you know-
Sure.
RVs are parked somewhere that no one expected to see, and, and, uh, since they're not planning on doing it, they don't really have the room to do it anyway, it shouldn't be any harm to add it.
Okay, point, anybody else? Any, uh, questions or comments in the meeting? Anybody willing to make a motion? Alderman Tenza?
Thank you, uh, I'd make a motion that, uh, the planning board makes a determination that the plan does meet the requirements as outlined in site plan, NRO, section one ninety dash one forty-six D and section one ninety dash twenty-three F, um, in that, um, in, so approving the plan, we make the following recommendations as to the stipulations one through eight as, uh, recommended by staff, as well as, uh, stipulation number nine, that no outside storage may occur on this site.
Uh, and before we take a second, I just, I just wanted to suggest Alderman Tenza, 'cause Mr. Pucci, uh, may, I know we made, in the first several plans, we added the language that here is stipulation number three, just to indicate that if there's a disagreement between the engineering department and the applicant, that that disagreement would come back to the planning board, so I don't know if you want to consider adding that language.
Yes, I would, and I, so I would amend, uh, stipulation three, uh, would show, so it reads that prior to the chair signing the plan, all comments in a letter from Joe Mandola Street Construction dated June twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen, shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department, uh, should there be a disagreement between the engineering department and the applicant, uh, any disagreement shall come back before, uh, the Nashville City Planning Board.
Okay, all right, so we have that motion to approve with those stipulations by Alderman Tenza, is there a second on that? Second by Mr. Weber, any further discussion, Mr. Pucci?
Yeah, I'm not gonna support the motion just for the reasons I stated about parking, I don't wanna bring the board into it, and everybody knows what I think, if you agreed with me, you would've said so, so, but that's the reason I'm not supporting, I think it's a good project, I think it's good for the city, I just don't think parking is adequate for that big building, so I won't be supporting it, but I just want to get that on the record.
Okay, any other discussion items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion passes?
Five, one, zero.
Yep, okay, all right, thanks. Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to new business site plan, number, case number seven, forty-two Level LLC, owner in application, acceptance of proposed site plan to keep an existing two-family building and construct an additional five-unit multifamily building, property is located at forty-two and L Lowell Street. So, at this point, um, do I have a motion from the board to take jurisdiction?
Don't move.
So we have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Weber, any second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Varley, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Uh, Mr. Maynard, it's worse.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Richard Maynard, professional engineer with Maynard Parkhead of Nashville, representing the property owner and applicant, forty-two Lovell LLC. Property of concern is located at forty-two Lovell Street, and consists of three lots of record that will be merged, resulting in a twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-six square foot lot in the RC multifamily zone. Property contains an existing two-family house, and we propose to add an additional five units for a total of seven units. For the units, we'll have two-car garages, and there will be a six-space parking lot for a total of fourteen spaces, or two spaces per unit, versus only one point five spaces per unit required by the ordinance. Green space will be fifty-five percent versus the, uh, minimum ordinance requirement of thirty-five percent. Stormwater is handled by roof gutters connected to a perforated drainpipe and leach-and-catch basins. The soils are classified as windsor, sands and gravels, which are excessively well-drained, the percolation rate is very rapid, and stormwater will, will be infiltrated into the ground. Runoff that previously ran off to the street will be contained on-site and therefore runoff to the city street and city drain system will be eliminated. The entire south side of Lovell Street has an existing sidewalk, and sidewalk also exists on the north side of the street in front of the existing home. There are two waivers to be considered, one for existing conditions, and one for underground utilities. There are, these are proposed to be rental units, and trash will be handled by individual trash containers. Thank you.
Questions on the board, Mr. Weber?
Question for staff. There is, um, existing sidewalk on the other side, as, as Maynard said, and there's one on their side, and then down the street, uh, as you go, if you came out of the property and went to the right, there's sidewalk on farther. Can we ask for, even though there's sidewalk across the street, can we stipulate that the sidewalk would continue to the extent, the end of the new pro, the new area that they're going to be doing?
Well, there is a, an existing sidewalk already across the street, so-
Right.
An existing sidewalk across the street?
You have to speak into the-
I can't hear you.
Oh, grab a mic. Sorry, there is a, an existing sidewalk across the street, but if the planning board felt that, that there should be one across the side, the frontage of this too, they could make that a stipulation.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, because if there wasn't, if there wasn't any, um, sidewalk on down, and, you know, this would make it so it's continuing, and, and large areas throughout the, the city, there is sidewalks on both sides of the street, and the only reason I'm, I would be asking for that is because there's one farther down- And the only reason I would be asking for that is because there's one farther down. And now we want to be able to connect. And eventually, the city can either, another house does it, or the city can make that happen. But as far as, at this time, that's the only thing I wanted to ask, and thank you. Is this going to be, each house is going to have their own trash? Are you going to have trash provider, container for them?
Each, each unit has their own trash row.
Great, okay. That is all I wanted. Thank you.
Mr. Pucci?
Yeah, just to confirm, this, this is permitted in this zone?
This is an RC zone. It's a multifamily zone.
So, you didn't need any zoning relief?
No, no zoning relief whatsoever.
All right, thank you.
All by right.
That's all I have.
Other questions of the applicant and the board? Not at this time. Okay.
Thank you.
Not at this time. At this point, I'd ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern with the plan? Go ahead and come forward and state your name and address and your question or concerns.
Hi, good evening. My name is actually Derek Perry. I live at 15 Ichabod Drive in Merrimack, but actually, my family lives at 51 Lovell Street, which is directly across from that unit, lot 164. As you can see, where the driveway actually exiting that unit ends directly across the street. So, we're just here talking about this. Now, most people feel like an invest, a home is an investment, right? It's kind of their biggest investment in their life. Now, I kind of have issues with this, because for 40 years, there's been nothing across the street. Been friends with that family that owned that house for 40-plus years. Not me personally, but my family has. Now, the issue I have is, first, is I have a feeling this is really going to reduce the property value of my investment, which is that home, which is 51 Lovell Street, lot 164, that two-family unit directly across the street. Now, you say, well, how is this going to reduce my investment for this? Well, first, you're going to additional car traffic. So, now you have those six spots right there, the handicap one on the far left and the five additional after that. So, instead of looking at a nice grass yard across the street, now we're going to be looking at a nice big five unit. Now, I hear that it's rental. Originally, I thought it was proposed to be just condos. Condos are a little better than just rental units. So, now I'm going to have to stare at cars directly across the street. If I ever go to sell that property, that's going to have a hard time selling it. Who wants to live across the street from a condo complex with staring at a bunch of cars out the window? All right? Second is the light pollution. Now, anytime you have a unit like that or you put those in, streetlights are required in the parking area for visibility or for security. Now, instead of having the nice quiet lot across the street, now I'm going to be staring at lights. Don't know how that's going to affect. Now, they can propose LED lighting that's, that, you know, that shoots down at the ground instead of up in the air. But the problem is, is that light's now going to come into our house across the street. So, that's going to affect how we live our lives, correct? Another thing is the construction convenience. I notice on this second page, actually.
Grab the mic, grab the mic on your way up. You can pull it right out.
Oh, perfect. Sorry, I prefer diagrams better. Now, this unit right here.
Just make sure you hold it out.
Oh, sorry, since we are located right here, see lot 164, all right? Now, this proposed portion right here is going to be dug up, because you have, right here, you have gas line, water line and sewer line, if I'm correct. So, now this is all going to be dug up right here, inconveniencing us in this house right here, correct? I don't see it inconveniencing anybody else.
Well, they'll have to restore that.
Wait, no, I understand.
It will be restored to its correct, to the way it is before they start, once they do that.
Right, but the, in the meantime.
Temporary.
True, but it still inconveniences us.
Sure.
I didn't ask for this. What monetary value do I gain from this? Do I have an investment in these? Can I buy all these units? Am I able to, as a property, I could buy all these units if somebody liked to sell them to me. I'll buy them all myself. That's, that's the issue right here is, so now you're inconveniencing us by cutting up this. Our driveway is right here. So, now, you're going to cut up this, cut off this section of street while you're doing it. I know what this is like, because this gas line was replaced last year, and a new manifold was put on here. I know this, because I watched the whole thing happen. So, you have all these things that are just inconveniencing just this house alone, just for this unit right here. Now, that's kind of, I mean, imagine looking at this. You've been looking for years at this nice grass across the street, and now you got to look, think of your own home. How would you like it if somebody put a big condo complex, and you got to stare at it all day? You know, most people don't want to do that. You kind of want to, you go to your home to relax and not look out the window and look at another gigantic building. That's the big issue I have with that. Another issue I have is, last year, this is pertaining to it, I know it's slightly different subject, but it's on the same thing. Last year, the town thought that raising our property taxes of lot 164, 52% was adequate. I had to go down to the meeting, that was held in our district at the elementary school, and go down there and speak with an assessor and have an assessor come back for that, and to have to reassess the taxes. They decided to go up 25% and 52%. So, I kind of don't have a lot of confidence that somebody really thought about this really well, if I had to correct somebody with a tax thing. I'm not an accountant, but it's not hard to do simple math, to have this all add up. It just doesn't seem right. Now, the issue with this is also is the rental property. So, now you got a rental property. So, I have a niece that stays over there once in a while, right? She loves to play in the yard. So, now, you have a rental property. I don't know the types of people that are going to be living across the street. Before, it's been a man that's lived there. His parents built that house in the 1930s. So, you knew who the neighbors were. Growing up in my neighborhood, you knew who all the neighbors were. Now, you're going to have different rental units. Each one's a different rental unit. You're going to have different renters in each one. Who knows what the turnover is? Who knows what those people are like? So, now I'm going to be concerned, geez, my niece is playing outside. Are those safe people? Maybe, maybe not, you know? It's just these things. It just decreases the whole value of the whole neighborhood itself. It's turning this nice residential street into basically, it's going to be a condo complex. They already did it down at the other end of the street, on the, if you go down the east side of Lovell Street, right at the corner of, it's not Ash, it's right on the same street as the fire station.
Was it Chestnut?
Chestnut Street. They built, there was a house right there that had an acre and a half of vacant lot behind it. They sold it to a condo complex as well. I mean, it's just, it seems like the town cares more about how can we put more condos in here and more rental properties than caring about becoming, this used to be the best place to live in 89, I believe, was it 89 and 92? Because it's a residential area. Putting more condos in a downtown neighborhood with, with houses just doesn't sound like a place I would want to live. So, when I go to sell that house, I'm going to have a hard time selling it. So, you're reducing all my investment value in that house. There's no benefit for me. You're inconveniencing me by ripping up the street in front, so now I'm going to have to deal with all the dirt and all the mess and all the noise and so forth with that. And how, maybe I'm going to have to go this way, go down to the east and down Ash Street to get to the house. It's, it's just, there's nothing positive about this. And I know there are other people, neighbors here that as well, that would like to speak about it. But it's just, it's, it just doesn't seem like a good idea. There's no, there's no positive for any neighbors. And I know there's a positive for the person who bought the unit. I tried to buy the unit. I couldn't even get it in time. I was going to buy the land for how much it went for. But it's, it's, there's no, I, I hope you guys would think of what it would be like for yourself to literally look out your window one day, seeing a nice yard across the street, and then all of a sudden, you're going to see five big condo units and a bunch of cars going back and forth. Now, I'm going to be worrying about my niece staying there once in a while, too, being like, well, these people driving back and forth, who knows the types of people that are going to be there? Now, you got to be extra careful about the car traffic. Before, there was just regular residential traffic. Now, there's going to be traffic for that. Those are my concerns. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Pucci?
Mr. Perry, you raised a bunch of things, and I have.
Sorry, I know they're very quick. Apologize.
No, no, that's what you're here for.
I'm limited time today.
Of all the things that you raised, I think there's one thing that we might be able to speak to. First.
Sure.
Just to explain a little bit. What the applicant is looking to do is a permitted use by city code. Okay, so, the land is zoned appropriately to allow this type of building.
It's zoned as multifamily, correct? Is it still, does that still classify as multifamily?
It does. If it wasn't conforming to what the city will allow on the lot, then the planning department would have prevented the application from going forward without the applicant having to get a variance. So, I haven't studied this, but I have complete confidence that the planning department has.
Okay.
So, I'm sure that it's conforming to what's allowed.
They didn't have confidence, and they raised the property tax 52%. See, my point.
We're not a tax board, and we don't get involved in, in that.
No, I know, I've already spoken to them many times.
That's not something I'm going to consider in my consideration, just, just so you know.
Right.
But one thing you did raise is the parking, the, the six spaces that are parked there.
Yeah.
Would, would you feel better about that if there was some kind of fencing there to prevent the headlights from those cars from hitting the property? Would that alleviate any of your concern with that? Obviously, we can't alleviate the, the cars pulling in and out of the driveway.
Right.
That's the way it goes.
May I come up there just to show, just?
No, I know you can, but I mean, I can, it's pretty obvious what it is.
If you were, if you were to design this, I mean, not like I'm a designer, but I can read these really well. I don't understand why you would put something like this, especially in front. That's an eyesore. If you're really looking to rent from somebody, if you really were, you put these units here and you put the parking in back. You keep everything that's non-pleasant to look at behind the unit. You guys have just said that with the PSNH that I had listened to, and you just said so with U-Haul. So, that's my thing, is I don't know why they don't put this behind there. I don't like this altogether, but this is the worst. So, now basically, so this is a sitting room. We're always in this room right here. So, now when these people, there's constantly going to be headlights in this house all day long. And that's just going to be annoying, yeah.
My question to you was.
Yep.
Would it help, would you feel better about it if there was some kind of fence or some kind of structure there to prevent those lights on the parked cars from hitting your property? Not.
No, I understand. I see what you're getting at.
Not rearranging the, the site plan. They're proposing this plan.
No, I understand.
So, if, if this is the plan we're considering, would that help you?
Slightly. I still am not for it, just because, not at all. But the problem is, is so what type of fence would you put? You'd put a chain-link fence you could put with slats in it to reduce that. But now you're looking at a nice fence, you're looking at a nasty fence. For the past 40 years, there's been a chain-link fence there.
Gotcha, okay.
But I understand your point. I see your point of trying to at least ease the situation. I get that.
A lot of the things you raised, I don't believe our board can address, okay? But that's something we might be able to address, which is why I'm asking you about it.
Right, no, and I appreciate you trying to, for the concern. Thank you, yeah.
All right, thank you.
So, if I may ask you before, before I go, so these processes, is this, this has already been approved by everything, by the zoning, and that design and everything, the layout has already been approved?
It's not that it's approved, it's that the plan that the property owner submitted.
Yeah.
Conforms to the rules the city has for that piece of property. That's what the planning department does. The planning department looks at what they want to do and confirms that it conforms with what the law allows or the ordinances allow in Nashua.
Right.
If they determine it does.
Yeah.
Then there's no need to intervene, because they have a right to do what they're doing.
Right.
If they determine that it doesn't, then they would refer the applicant to the zoning board, which is the board that would grant relief. They want to do something they're not allowed to do. They need permission.
Right.
They would have to get that permission from the zoning board. That's not the case here.
Right.
They're allowed by right to do what they're asking to do. So, it's not that we've approved it, it's that they don't need our approval to make this plan. They need our approval for what they're presenting to us.
Right.
As far as the impact goes. But as far as what they want to do with their property, they don't need our permission.
Is there anything from preventing me from physically renting out all the units myself, so that nobody lives there?
Well, no. I, I, I mean, you're asking questions, you're, you're making comments, and I realize it's an emotional thing for people in the neighborhood.
I have the money to do it. That's why I'm saying is, I, I wish I had bought the property and I would have done it beforehand.
My answer to that would be, when a property goes on the market, anybody has the right to purchase it, and that's a, that's a private deal. And when it comes to who lives across the street, trust me, you don't know who lives across the street right now.
Actually, I do who lives across the street from me right now, one of the state reps.
Okay, but there's no one, no one who lives in Nashua can control who lives next door to them or across the street from them, unless they don't own the property. That's the nature of the community.
I understand.
So, this is really not something we could address, as far as those concerns.
And what can you address, then, for ripping up the street in front and causing all the noise pollution and all that?
That's addressed by the city, because the city will require, when they have to pull permits to go into the street.
Yep.
They're going to have to attach their utilities.
Yeah.
The city engineering department is going to require that when they do that, if they have a construction meeting, they'll require that there's, that there's safety going on when they do that. So, they'll have either traffic control or police officer, however they determine it's necessary to keep it safe while they're doing it. And they'll be required to restore it to the condition that it was in before they started. So, I mean, common sense would tell you, whenever anybody's building anything, there's going to be temporary disruption.
Right, I understand, and it's.
So, we, we can't, we can't say to somebody, go ahead and put your sore in, but you can't dig the street up. I mean.
No, I understand. It's just, it seems like it's going to inconvenience us mostly. And there's no, what do I get out of it?
You don't get anything out of it, but there's no obligation of your neighbors to do something that benefits you. Unfortunately, that's the reality of, of the world.
Oh, I understand.
I know it sounds cold. I'm just trying to address what you raised.
I, I didn't get rich by not understanding business, so I totally understand. The point is, is it just seems like there's just, it's just a shame. It's just a shame to see a nice residential neighborhood turned into a condo complex. And I would just think people, like I said, you guys in your own houses that you live in, I would think, how would you feel looking across that every day? Maybe you don't care, maybe you do. But I would just think that you would think about that before approving something like that, how the other neighborhoods would feel. So, and then my last thing is, is, so after that's put in, I'm sure those will get appraised for so forth. If that affects my value for my house, what can I do? Do I have to go back to the assessor's department as well and say, now you've reduced the value of my house? And then contact my lawyer and pursue it that way? I just, I'm just trying to figure, he's a lawyer, I believe Mr. Varley is, correct?
Yes.
I, I do my research.
I don't know if I'm necessarily qualified to answer this particular question, but I will say, as Mr. Pucci indicated before, I mean, we are not associated with the tax assessing department. So, there is a process, obviously, by which you can challenge an assessment. So, if you believe that the assessment was improper or incorrect, there's, there's a process by which you could, you could, you know, work with the, the tax assessor to, to appeal that assessment. But it would be totally independent of this process here tonight.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope, I think I've expressed my concern. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks. Appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concerned with the plan? Come on up.
My name is Nancy Wasserman Rahla, and I live on Two Marquee Ave, which you can see is on the corner of Lovell and Marquee. Right across, really, from the proposed building plan. And it says on this paper multifamily, but we are not multifamily. And I understand you're addressing my neighbor, who previously spoke about certain things that people have a right to do with their property. And, and I understand that, but it's kind of that age-old question, where does his freedom start to infringe on my freedom to enjoy my backyard? Because those, and, and I definitely think it's a good idea to include the fence and not a chain-link fence, a nice tall wooden fence, because my backyard looks directly at that space that's going to have six parking spaces. And if you add up how many cars in total are going to live there, it's a potential of 18 cars. And my house, like most of the houses in the neighborhood, are fairly old houses and were built much closer to the street than homes are today. So, I definitely am going to have all those cars, six cars, facing right into not only my backyard, which has been a private space for me and my family for years, but now it's going to be a pretty much open space with those cars there. To say nothing of the fact that our bedrooms are on that side, are on the Lovell Street side, in having those cars parked there. And you add up the cars in total that could potentially live there, that's 18 cars. 18 cars. That is a lot of cars for that neighborhood. And as my neighbor said, you don't deal in quality of life up here at these meetings. But think about it, would you like to live there? And what is that going to do to the property value of my home as well? I, I'm very concerned about the property value of my home. And I'm particularly concerned about 18 cars living across, just feet from my bedroom window, just feet. It's a very tightly packed, old neighborhood that real, that this plan is just not, it just doesn't fit. this plan is just not, it just doesn't fit. He has a right to do what he wants, but he's gonna diminish the quality of life for me, and my family, and my neighbors, the one that just spoke, and another one that's here tonight concerned about it. And that is the question, where does someone else's freedom step on my freedom to enjoy my backyard? That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concerned with the plan? Feel free to come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Juan. I live to the, I'm the owner of Lot 154, next to-
Juan, could you just give us your last name?
Menjivar, Juan Menjivar. I owned a property for over a decade, and it has been a lovely neighborhood. I have a seven-year-old boy, and it's been a happy place for all these years. And a year ago, they just built a apartment complex in the back, and now they are proposing to build another one right next to me. So, I just, I know, I oppose to this plan. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concerned with the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Hearing none. Mr. Mayor, I give you a chance to come up and maybe comment on some of the questions and concerns that might have been raised here.
I know people don't like disturbances in their long-established neighborhood. Unfortunately, what we're doing here is by right. It's quality construction, it will improve values in the neighborhood, because new construction always enhances values. So, this idea that devalue your homes is wrong. This is a multifamily neighborhood. This is very much in character with this entire neighborhood. Just about every property is a multifamily project, whether it's two units or six, seven, eight units in this, so that whole neighborhood is like this. The street construction, it's a temporary thing, it has to be done. It's not unusual, this is done all over the city when new construction is, you have to put the utilities in to serve the property. The street will be dug out for a week or two or three, but then it'll be repaved and patched to an equal or better condition than it is today. We have an issue now about privacy. People are used to seeing a lawn out here from their houses across the street. And they're taking advantage of my applicant's property for their views, et cetera, et cetera. If it bothers, it is pavement, there are things they can do to their own property to screen, and they can put more shrubbery, they can put more trees, they can put their own fence up also, if that's gonna bother them in that regard. So, this project is not unusual. We have these projects of this nature throughout the city. We need housing. This is a good project for the area. So, Mr. Pucci mentioned about a fence in front of our parking spaces. Well, I'm not sure what we could put that's at all attractive in front of a fence in front of a parking space like that. To be effective, it would be a solid fence, it would be about three foot high. And I'm not sure that that's at all particularly attractive, at all, in this regard. Some shrubs, some hedges, might be okay, but if the neighbors can do the same thing also, if they're bothered by the project. What we propose, the driveway is where the existing driveway for this property has been forever, so, in that regard. So, we have a project that meets every requirement of the city, every requirement. It's in character with the neighborhood, it provides a substantial benefit to the community, and the fact that it's rental has nothing to do with anything either way. People don't want to get along with the neighbors, well, that's fine, they don't want to get along, but, you know, people come and go all the time throughout our neighborhoods, and nobody can expect nothing to change in their neighborhood. You know, there's a little slang phrase that runs around, it's called nimby, and this is a classic case of it, not in my neighborhood. Unfortunately, this is available, this is empty land, it was available, there were several bidders for this property. There were, I know of, at least four people who tried to buy this property, and it competed against each other, so I don't know where the neighbor was when he said he tried to buy it, but whatever that was. So, anyway, we have a project that meets the criteria, meets the regs, it's got all the positive approvals of staff, and that's about all I can say. Thank you.
Mr. Varley?
All right, so, Mr. Mayor, appreciating what you've just said, and not necessarily disagreeing with you on any of those points, in terms of some type of screening, whether it would be fencing, or, you know, shrubs or plantings, is that something that your client would be willing to consider?
We can consider plantings, we're not gonna do a fence. That's ugly. Sorry, it's ugly. It won't, it will totally distract.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Weber?
I would really like to see the shrubberies that would, because you are impacting the neighborhood, because most of the cars are-
Parallel parked.
Or they're parked going into their garage. They don't park facing out, and you-
You are impacting that neighborhood with the cars turning around and facing out.
It would be a good neighborhood-
Saying that a lot of applicants come in here and try to help out, because they are impacting the neighborhood. So I would say, shrubberies that would prevent light
pollution going onto your neighborhood would be a very important thing. I've looked at the neighborhood, and the neighborhood does have a lot of already, like you said, so I'm not even against what you're proposing here. But I would see that the impact that you are doing, you're gonna be impacting them. The other thing, are you gonna be making provisions for the roadwork so that the people across the street can, are, on a daily basis, are gonna be able to get provisioned, so that if they have to get in and get out at any time, are there provisions when they do the construction that they will be able to do that?
It's a requirement that you be able, people can access their property, so you have to make some provisions to get in and out. So they have to work with the neighbors, but I can't tell you right now until-
Okay.
Until there's a contractor to go out there and will work with the city and work with the people.
Good.
Of course. Nobody can be denied access to their property.
Exactly. I just wanted to have you say that.
It may be a temporary disturbance, but, you know, for several hours, but not for continuous days, is what I'm gonna say to you.
I wanted you to say that, so that they would hear that.
Okay, because you can usually put one of these lines in within a day, in and out within a day, maybe even a half a day.
So you're agreeing to-
Because there's nothing particularly difficult about these utility constructions.
So, are you agreeing, or are you, the applicant agreeing to, would he agree to, or she agree to, shrubs in front of that?
I already told Adam Varley, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if those six spaces were eliminated-
Excuse me?
If those six spaces were eliminated from the plan, would the plan work?
No.
Why not?
Because we'd have three units with no place to park.
So, how many spaces do you need to make the-
All right.
What's the minimum spaces you need for the plan to work?
There's two avenues of thought on this. The ordinance says 1.5 spaces per unit. We have two spaces per unit.
Includes the garage?
Yes, including the garage. Four of the units have two-car garages, three of the units have no, are outside parking.
Okay.
All right, so, I don't like doing that, because my experience is that the majority, not always, but the majority of apartments have two cars. And to cut it back from two per unit down to one and a half per unit, you'd reduce the spaces by two, from six to four, but then, you'd be limiting the number of cars any family could potentially have, and so, and you wouldn't have any visitor parking either, or overnight parking, or anything like that. So, you would, it would be to the detriment of the project to reduce the parking to less than what's shown now.
Is there street parking there?
It's a, I didn't see any sign, I can't remember exactly, but I don't think there was any signs that say no parking, but obviously, you can't overnight park on any city street, and that's a big problem, and you don't want overnight park in the street here anyway, because it's just a regular street, there's nothing extra wide or anything about it. But, so, if somebody visits for an hour or two, they can park in the street, of course, but if somebody comes overnight, or stays late, or whatever it is, you need to make a thing, or you're gonna have people parking on the lawn all the time, and that's gonna bring the values down too. You know, when you do things like that, you're pushing these projects towards, I don't want a rundown status, because they don't look neat and pristine, because they don't, they have cars all over the place, they don't, they have people parking on the lawn, things like that, that does not enhance property values when you reduce parking under a certain number.
Okay, thanks. And then, I guess the plan's not showing any site lighting, are you-
It's what?
The plan is not showing any site lighting.
Yes, it is. It shows, it shows wall packs overhead on the units, at the garages, and there's also more than adequate public streetlights, overhead streetlights.
There's no new pole lights being put in the parking area.
No more parking, no. There's just enough for safety purposes to enter your unit, plus there's enough general lighting in the street already.
Existing streetlights.
Yes, existing streetlights. There's no reason to be putting more lights in, making it excessively bright, et cetera, it serves no purpose.
Yeah, just bringing it up, because one of the butters had a concern about new lot lighting, and-
No, it's very subdued. And then, the main light is down in the lower left-hand corner, I think the plan tells you, there's a utility pole with a light on it. That's the principal light for the street frontage, and then the wall packs over the garages at the building, which doesn't go very far from the building, they shine down. And they're not on permanently, they're on, each one is individually controlled, so.
And the streetlight's already there.
Yes, the streetlight is already there, and it's more than adequate light-
Okay.
-at the street, or just inside the property.
Alderman, Melizagoya?
Yes, you mentioned guest parking, so, I'm looking, units three, four, five, and six have garage parking, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's two cars in each garage?
Two-car garages, correct.
Okay, so, units one, two, and seven, three units, are going to be using these parking spaces.
Yes, ma'am.
If, as we know, today in many homes, there are two people working, so there are two cars. So those three units will, in fact, if there are two cars per unit, take up the six spots that you're proposing. Where would guests come if residents park, if residents are taking all of the spots that you have here?
Guests would park on the street during the day, there wouldn't be any place for them to go, be overnight, so, there's no overnight guest parking, which is not, and in fact, if I did what the ordinance wants, 1.5 spaces, and I had only four spaces here, I'd even have a bigger problem. So, we exceed the ordinance.
Well, and I'm not questioning you're exceeding the ordinance, but you mentioned guest parking, and I'm looking at this, and what I'm anticipating is that if I live at unit two, and my family's coming for Christmas, I could have one or two cars parked outside my garage. And so, if I can't park on the street, especially if there's a snow-
Yes, you can. During the day, you can park on the street.
I'm parking at night. If there's a snow emergency and I can't park on the street, so, my question is, if it's at night, and I can't have my overnight guests parking on the street, is there enough room in front of the garages and for guests to park here other than if those six spaces are used by residents? And in fact, I guess backing up, are spaces going to be assigned, or is it gonna be just whoever gets there gets them? And so, if I'm a resident, and you have an overnight guest, and I come home at one o'clock in the morning, and your guest is in my space, what happens?
All right. The space is most likely to be assigned to the three units that don't have garages, so.
So those spaces, it's anticipated, will be resident-only parking, so there's no guest parking, and there's, I guess, I'm just trying to understand if there's a fire, and I live in unit five, and I've got people, it's the holidays, and my family's come from out of town, and I've got two cars, and they're parked in front of my garage, is that going to present a fire code issue?
First of all, they're not gonna be allowed to be parked in front of the garage like that, because they'll be blocking everybody else. That's a fire code, definite problem, and it's a no-no. You can't look at this as if this is a single-family house in a residential neighborhood. These are multifamilies. They are, by their nature, somewhat dense. This idea that you want to bring your family in, and bring in three, four, five cars, and try to park them overnight on the property, it's a no-no. You can't do that, doesn't matter where you are, on whatever multifamily you are, there's no way to do that in most multifamily projects. If family comes to visit, they're there during the day, they go someplace else at night, they don't keep their car there overnight.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I am just asking a question related to the reality of, many people who live in Nashua today are not from Nashua. And so, often, for traditional family times, funerals unfortunately, weddings, Christmas, Thanksgiving, people may have one or two cars of family members who are spending the night with them. And so, I'm just trying to understand the parking. And it was your comment-
Alderman.
-about these six spaces-
Alderman.
Excuse me, these six spaces possibly being used for guest spaces, that made me just look at the numbers, three units without garages, two cars per unit, those six spaces are taken up. I'm just asking you a question.
And I-
So your answer is, there is no space here for overnight guest parking?
Correct.
Thank you.
Nor is there a requirement.
I did not ask if there was a requirement.
I'm speaking here.
You finish.
Other questions for Mr. Mayor? Alderman Tenza?
So, it appears to me that the lot where the house is now, has a sidewalk in front.
Yes.
Albeit, but the lot, the grass lot where the garage is now, does not have-
That's correct.
And so, what's your, the developer's position on including a sidewalk to extend?
City requirement is that sidewalk be on one side of the street, and no more is required. We have one and a half, we have the entire other side of the street plus half of our property. We exceed the ordinance requirement. So, we're not interested in building the city's sidewalk. This is the city right of way, the city's old neighborhood, it's the city's responsibility. This idea that developers have to do the city's work is not right. So, if the sidewalk was so important, why isn't the city, go ahead and build it? You know, they collect funds all the time for sidewalks.
And we've had this discussion with the planning board, and with yourself, Mr. Mayor, on a number of-
I've been in the city all my life.
And so I just wanted to be clear, not willing to do it this time.
Okay. Alderman, Melizagoya?
If I may point out, I'm looking-
Yes, if I may point out, um, I'm looking at your plan and your plant list and actually in front of where these parking spaces are, you've got dogwoods and, and other plants that look- so it looks like you're already planning for an evergreen sort of screening there?
Well, the dogwoods are trees.
I know, I know what they are, but there's also all these other dots that look like they might be arborvitae or some- I'm not sure because I'm not measuring the dots.
I understood, we have some of that stuff, but the question, in order to do what people are looking for, it'd be, have to be a continuous-
Right.
Planting of some kind of ever, low-growing evergreen, potentially couple of feet high, which is, I would call it a hedge.
Right.
And that's, that's not on the plan right now, but my owner would be acceptable to that as I've told the-
Right, I just, for people who may not be looking at this close-up, I just wanted to point out there, there already is-
We did not, not plan something, but, uh-
Right, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Maynard? Okay. Um, at this point, um, I would, you know, based on our board procedure, we do allow the one person from the public to come back up and respond and, um, to any of the questions in the rebuttal that the applicant. I would just ask that you kinda get together, if you are planning to do it, elect one person and that one person speak for the, for the group, because we can't have multiple people. You can take a couple of minutes if you want, that's, that's fine. And make sure, just for the record, state your name and address again, thanks.
Derek Perry again, 15 Nicobad Drive in Merrimack. Uh, one big question is, is this gonna be low-income housing?
It's okay.
It's beyond what was said.
I didn't know if that's gonna be-
These questions have to be precise to what the rebuttal was, I think.
Only.
Not explaining beyond that.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, Chair.
It is, it's what it's supposed to be, that's what it's supposed to be.
Okay. Do you have any specific questions to the rebuttal of the applicant?
Uh, yeah, well, it just seems like the parking concern-
Yeah.
Which, uh, the alderman over there pointed out, seems to be a big thing altogether. It seems like I'm not the only one that sees that, that's just not a good setup. I, it's a horrible design, I mean, I'm sorry for, you know, but it's just, it makes no sense, why would you do that? I mean, to now, for now, I feel like parking my car out in front of somebody else's house with the headlights in all day long too, you know what I mean? It's just, it just seems like that, but I feel bad for the gentleman just in front of me. He's a tenant actually in, uh, unit one or number two, I believe, or no, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but I'm gonna object to going beyond what the rebuttal was. We have-
All right, then you know what?
Very extensive agenda tonight and we need to stay, follow our rules.
That's fine with me, then I'm all done, you're the last to have heard from me, all righty.
All right, thanks. Any other questions of the applicant from the board at this point? Alderman, Melizagoya?
Just, just in response to the, yeah, I'm sure you probably have the answer. To my knowledge, there were no special funds requested that would make you have stipulations on, um, these being low-income housing. I mean, there's no federal or state money that has put some, it's all private.
There's standard multi-families, open to anybody.
Okay, I just wanted to have-
Yeah, it's not ALLEA, it's not workforce, it's-
It's market rate?
It's market rate.
Okay.
Middle-income type of, uh-
Right, okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, any other questions for staff from the board? Okay. Uh, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing and move into the public meeting. All right, so we've got a multi-unit, um, development plan proposed here. Had several discussions, obviously, with regard to parking being one of them, um, neighborhood impact, um, street disruptions, disruption, um, traffic, that kinda thing. Happy to take anybody's discussion out of it.
Headlights need to be addressed also.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's Mr. Peterson, Mr. Weber?
Um, I would, um, ask for, um, a stipulation 14, provide a concrete sidewalk on this side of the, on this side of the property to con, to go to the end. And the reason I'm saying that, I would not ask for that if there wasn't concrete on down the street on the same side as this property. So I'm just trying to say, and I know there's one across the way, but there is, on that's, on this side of the property, on this side of the road, there's side, concrete sidewalk all the way down on the left and there's, it comes to his house and it stops partway on his dri, on his property and then way onto the right, there's also concrete down there. That's the only reason I would ask for the stipulation to continue going across. So you're, now you're making it clo, you know, closer and closer to be a continuous sidewalk on both sides. And this does happen throughout the certain parts of the city and within this area, it does happen on other streets that there is concrete on both sides. And I know it's an impact, but I'm just saying that's, I'm throwing that out there. And that's the only reason I'd like to, everybody else, doesn't have to happen, it's just something-
We're in the, we're in the meeting now, so-
Yeah, but there's no legal right to require that.
I can put it as, I already asked, there's a stipulate, if we wanna stipulate it, we can stipulate it. Uh, it, but it doesn't have to happen, if the rest of the board members say no, it doesn't happen.
So you're talking about looking at that site plan, grab your mic, just so you can be specific on what you're-
Currently, currently it comes-
Talking about the, the frontage.
Concrete, it is, all of this is paved, concrete.
Yeah.
And over here, there's concrete.
Yeah.
His comes to here and all I'm saying is for him to continue it to here and then at some point, this can be filled in. But it's one of the objective, and that's all I'm saying is, it's, I'm just, his comes to here, continue it to there. If the rest of the board doesn't say that's what they wanna do, that's fine, but it just continues over here. If this wasn't here, I'd never talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my concern with that is, you know, we've shown some interest in potentially putting hedges and things in the front.
Sure, that's true. I have that on 15.
Would you be able to fit all that between the road and the, if you add a sidewalk, now you're talking like six feet off the road, are we essentially at the edge of the parking?
That could happen, I'd be more interested in the shrubs than the concrete.
So much, I'm not sure, we might be asking for two things that aren't compatible.
Exactly.
In that scenario, it's just a thought.
Yeah, no, it's a great thought, I'd be more, I would prefer hedges for the neighborhood than for the concrete.
Mr. Peterson?
In sitting here, I, I looked at the Google view of that property and the existing house has got the concrete sidewalk, but if we extend it to where the new development is, um, that'll make it much harder to put in a hedge, that will block the headlights.
Right.
Yeah, no, I totally agree.
Mr. Varley?
So first, just as the sidewalk, I mean, in addition to sort of the feasibility of it in connection with the hedges, I, you know, I don't always agree with Mr. Maynard, but on this point, I do agree with him that I don't think that there's a legitimate basis for requiring a sidewalk on the other side of the street. If, if it were a gap there and it would otherwise be totally continuous, maybe. But I, I, I agree with him that I don't think it's the job of developers to put in pieces of sidewalk that may someday be connected to other pieces of sidewalk, um, left alone. And given that there's a sidewalk continuously on the other side of the street that does meet the ordinance, in my view, that I, I wouldn't be supportive of requiring a sidewalk here. The other point, I just wanna, I, I think partly for the benefit of, of those who, the butters who spoke this evening, I am sympathetic to their views and considerations. You know, we've had this situation come up any number of times, you know, i- in cases where there are lots that are substantially less developed than this, maybe completely wooded lots. And I appreciate that if you've been looking at a wooded lot or, you know, a, a grassy yard for 20 years or something, that it's, you know, it's disruptive and you'd prefer that it remain that way. But I, I think as Mr. Pucci very validly pointed out, I mean, there are, there are limited degrees to which we can limit the development and/or should limit the development of a particular piece of property like this. And, uh, you know, this property conforms with the zoning requirements and to me is, is not an inappropriate use of the property. And, you know, although, again, I, I appreciate the concerns that the neighbors raised, I, I don't see this as inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. As Mr. Maynard pointed out, this is largely multi-family units. You can see from the overview map, I mean, there's a number of other apartment or condo buildings that are right in the general vicinity and, you know, what's being proposed is, I think, you know, otherwise an attractive and, um, you know, going to be well-constructed, you know, uh, set of buildings. So, I, I just wanted, like I said, to provide that for the, the benefit of some of the butters so they understand, you know, why, when I intend to vote in favor of the plan, that that's, that's why I'm doing so, not withstanding concerns. And, you know, to the point about trying to mitigate the impact to the extent we can, I do think, you know, requiring there to be some sort of screening with the landscaping, I think that's an appropriate, you know, limitation or request that we can impose upon the developer here.
I agree.
Alderman Tenza?
Thank you, I, I just wanna pour out to the board's attention on, um, plan five of six. It's actually in here, it shows where the existing sidewalk is and where the trees will be located. Um, and so there wouldn't be any, any issue with continuing the existing sidewalk and having the trees, the dogwood trees as, um, already planned. And, and I know there's varying opinions on, on developers and what their obligations are to the city or what the city's obligations are, but, um, in approving plans and, and, um, we, we require folks to do all sorts of things that they may not wanna do because it's good for the neighborhood, it's good, good for the city. So philosophically, I'm not as opposed to, to requesting that developers include sidewalks. And I think if there, we don't see many cases where it would be appropriate, but I think that this was, would be one of the places where it is, where the lots would actually connect the sidewalk in between. So then, you know, referring to my site plan approval criteria, it tells us that determining the acceptability of a proposed site plan "For it shall take into effect consideration the effects of a proposed development of health, safety, nuisance, property values, aesthetics, traffic conditions and future highway improvements." Um, and those are the, that's the criteria we have to look at and those are the only criteria we can, we can look at. The one issue that I have with this plan is, is parking, uh, 'cause I don't, I don't believe that it's enough. Um, and I know Mr. Maynard keeps saying, well, the entire neighborhood is, is multi-families. There's a difference between the, the two-family homes that are in this neighborhood in, in a seven-unit building that he's proposing to, to develop or his clients are proposing to develop. Um, the seven-unit building is gonna bring in much more traffic than the two-family homes that, that are there on, on a fairly regular basis. Um, so because of that, you know, at least as currently constructed for, um, as has been presented to us tonight, because of the parking, um, at this time, I'm, I'm not in favor of moving forward with the plan until a better design can be, or there can be some more, um, assurances that parking's not gonna be an issue for the tenants of this building moving forward.
So, on the parking, I struggle with, um, asking for parking that's higher than the ordinance typically. It, in a lot of reasons, you know, I, I don't think the planning board is the, you know, if, if the parking ordinance isn't right, that should be addressed. Like if we think 1.5 spaces per unit is not right, we should inform, you know, the alderman and council that that might need to be addressed in the ordinances, but I'm generally in favor of sticking with our ordinances area, if, if we're exceeding it. You know, I, I sometimes am concerned if we're exceeding it because that could create too many people coming to the site, you know, for whatever reason, you know? But I'm not sure that's the situation here, I think the situation is, we think the ordinance isn't enough parking, right? But, you know, is that a legitimate way to, if we're, if we're saying our ordinance isn't enough, I'm not sure that's the planning board's job to begin denying plans that don't meet, that, that do meet our ordinances consistently, you know? So that's, I have a little bit of a concern there, but I see what you're saying and, you know. It, I do think people will be looking at that parking when they potentially rent, should be, and recognizing that if I rent this property, I have limited parking and no, no guest parking. And it may affect who, who decides to rent there, you know, particularly. Just my thoughts there, but. Mr. Varley?
Yeah, just, just to follow up on, on the parking issue, just a couple of additional points. I, I mean, one, I, I think we have a tension here between, you know, in addition to the, the ordinance, I tend to agree with you, Mr. Clare, in addition that there's a tension between all of the butters we've heard from, their concern was not about insufficient parking, but about there being that many parking spots. So I think there's a tension between saying, gee, we don't think there's enough parking, but also, you know, more parking would presumably exacerbate that concern on the part of the neighbors. And then, I would just say too, I mean, I, I think this issue of visitor parking, overnight parking, I mean, it's an issue in, in, for any residential, I mean, you know, I live home, uh, with, neighborhood with single-family homes with driveways and, and some with garages, but there's plenty of people who have maybe room for two or three cars to park and, you know, they're in a residential neighborhood, but they're subject to the same constraints, you know, people can't park on the street overnight and they may not have room for overnight visitors. So I, I don't think this is something unique to a multi-family unit in, in the downtown area, so.
Mr. Pucci?
Yeah, I, I agree, um, you know, what Alderman Tenza is saying, I think, is valid in the sense that we have the control of defining what we think is necessary for the specific property. And if we, if we think something is necessary that goes beyond what the, what the ordinance allows, I think we have the authority to do that, but in order to do that, we have to have a compelling circumstance, there has to be something unique to the property that, that makes it an exception. And in my view, that doesn't really exist here, that there's no, exactly what you were saying, I think, is true. In fact, we have plenty of apartments that we approve in the city that have no parking available to them. And, and that is always a concern to me, but that's allowed. Like when you, I remember when we were doing Factory Street, I don't know if it was this, I think it was, but in Factory Street, there was plenty of apartments being built there that did not have parking available. So I, I, I really agree with, with, uh, what they're saying about that. Sidewalk the same way, I think we have the right to say, you have to put a sidewalk here. But I think there has to be a very compelling reason to force somebody to spend thousands and thousands of dollars beyond what the, what the ordinance requires. And I don't see that here, it would be nice if it connects, I get that, but beyond that, I, I don't support it just because I don't see an extenuating circumstance that's unusual to this site. So I just wanted to, to explain why I, I think I can't support that. And I, and I realize, we're, you know, a lot of what I said to, to Mr. Perry is probably not sitting well. It's difficult for neighbors to accept the fact that property owners have a right to do what they want on their property. And while they've been looking at a vacant lot for 20 or 30 years and they've been enjoying it, when that changes, they perceive that as something being taken away from them. And I, I completely get that. But, you know, we are limited in what we can do. We, and, and I, I only like to say this to the public because I don't want the public to think that I don't agree with them, that it's, that it's gonna be hard to see. The thing is, we don't have the authority just to, to tell one property owner- The thing is, we don't have the authority just to, to tell one property owner that they can't utilize their land as the law allows them to utilize it because their neighbor doesn't like it. And that, and so, I'm only emphasizing that because I, it's important to me that land use boards in the city get perceived accurately by the public. And there are differences between things we think we should do and might be right. There's one thing Mr. Main had said that I don't agree with, and that is the parking. I think, I think the lights for the parking is important that we put a stipulation on because it's not really the same if the person across the street puts a fence up. They're only going to be allowed to put a six-foot fence up. But if you look at the geometry of it, the lights projecting from across the street, by the time it gets across the street, a fence wouldn't do much to block the light. It's important to block the light close to the light. So in that light, in that regard, I think that it's important that we do that if we decide we want that, that amount of protection we can give, a barrier, whatever kind of barrier it is, if it's, if it's thick bushes or however they can do it, I do think that that is important for the developer to do, rather than look at the, it's not like a fence between houses where I can put up a six-foot fence or you can, and it serves the same purpose. This isn't really like that going across the street, in my view. So I'm really in favor, in favor of requiring that. That's, that's really where I'm at on it right now.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, I like your articulation. On the, on the strawberries, can, would it be a good idea to stipulate that these are maintained by the, the property manager or who's ever going to be taking, that these are not just planted, but they're maintained so that two years down the road, if they're, they go bad, that they have to maintain this? Would that be a good idea?
I mean, there's a single property owner here, so you could just say the owner, yeah. It's, it's an apartment, so it's not a condo, so it's.
Yeah, okay.
There's no manager, it's the owner.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw that in.
Yeah.
Mr. Rapucci?
Just one, one more thing I wanted to say, even though I'm talking a lot. My experience is that when these things occur in neighborhoods, that after the dust settles, the best solution for the neighborhood is for just the people, the property owners to talk in a constructive way. There's almost nothing that's bothering people that can't be resolved if it's done collectively between the property owners. Most people who are developing property want their neighbors to be happy. They don't want their neighbors to be mad at them, they don't want trouble in the neighborhood, they want to satisfy concerns to the ability that they can. And I, I can't speak for this person, I don't know who he is or who she is, but I would just say, in general, most people that are developing want their neighbors to be content, and that's more than our ability to solve, that's the easiest way to solve those things. And that's, that's all I have.
Mr. Peterson?
Two things regarding blocking the light, I think Mr. Rapucci is correct. If you put a fence across the street where the neighbors are, that fence will be ineffective in terms of blocking the light. The barrier needs to be closer to the headlights and hedges or plants. Strawberry would do that. Then as far as extending the sidewalk, I think extending the sidewalk just one house length, 130 feet, it just puts in too much onus on the builder to extend the sidewalk 130 feet because the house after it doesn't have a sidewalk either. So that'd be an unnecessary requirement to put on the builder to extend the sidewalk 130 feet.
Okay.
And, oh, as Mr. Barley said, you know, are we in the business of like putting in sidewalks piecemeal here, there, everywhere? I don't think this is a good application for putting a sidewalk requirement.
Okay. Any other discussion? Anybody willing to make a motion? Mr. Rapucci?
So, New Business Number Seven, Site Plan at Forty-Two Level, the owner of Forty-Two Level LLC, at Forty-Two Level Street, Lovell, L-O-V-E-L-L, NRC, Urban Residence. The board finds, this motion finds that the plan does meet the requirement outlined in Site Plan NRO 190-146D, and this motion is to approve the, the plan with the following 14 stipulations. There were 13 stipulations listed here that are all to be left as they are, except number six, where we'll add that, just started to add that. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll do that. Number one, the request for a waiver of 279 EE, which requires an existing condition plan showing physical features within 1,000 feet of the site plan. We didn't even discuss that, but I'm going to say in this motion that it is granted. We find that granting that waiver, it's a common practice of this board, and it will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. The request for a waiver of NRO 19221, which requires all utilities to be placed underground, is granted. Again, we didn't discuss that, but it's our common practice that if it's consistent with the neighborhood, we don't require underground utilities. So we're going to, the motion is to grant that waiver as well, it won't be contrary to the public interest. So for the remaining stipulations listed here, just number six, we'll add that if there's a dispute between the developer and the engineering department, it will come back to the planning board for resolution. And then we're going to add a stipulation, which will end up being number 14, and I'm just going to work out the language of that, and you guys can correct me, but the applicant will agree to put a vegetation barrier that will, to the best of their, to the best of the, of the available type of vegetation barriers, or type of vegetation barriers available to the, to the developer, to block the, the front of the parking spaces to a height that will, will adequately block the headlights from crossing across the street to the neighbor. And I'm thinking that three feet is the, is the target. Now granted, separate from my motion here, just let me say, I don't know if we want to say they have to be at three feet when they're planted, or if they have to be the type of plant that will mature to, to be three feet. And I'm inclined to say it would be the type of, of vegetation that would mature to three feet or higher.
I mean, I think your, your general wording about it sort of being, you know, best-of-their-ability, appropriate screening, I think that's probably sufficient without.
Can you also add, they will be maintained?
And it will, and it will be maintained by the property owner.
And there are a lot of vehicles, like trucks, headlights is higher than three feet. So three-feet limit is.
You think that's too low?
I wouldn't give it a number.
Well, if we don't give it a number, they're not going to be obligated to do something. So if we think we should give it a four-foot, I mean, plenty of hedges can grow to four feet. If that's what you want to say, I'm happy to say it.
I would say minimum of four feet, and, and I also, I don't know if we need to stipulate that it will provide year-round blockage. You know, someone could plant something that's deciduous and.
That's fine.
Okay, so vegetation that will.
Evergreen.
Evergreen, that won't defoliate.
So you want to just restate that one stipulation?
Sure.
The 14?
Probably won't get it right anyway, but I'll try.
I think you did a great job.
The developer agrees to plant vegetation that will mature to four feet, at least four feet in height, and that will stay, that won't defoliate over the winter months, will stay intact the whole 12 months, with the intention of blocking the headlights from the cars parking there as they, as they hit the neighbor across the street.
Okay.
And that's my motion.
All right, so we have that motion to approve by Mr. Rapucci with the 14 stipulations as indicated, or as stated. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, so the motion passes. Yeah, we're going to take a, just a five-minute, where people say, so it's exactly 10 right now, we're going to start back up at 10 or 15. All right, New Business Site Plan, this is case number eight, East Hollis Street Acquisitions LLC Owner, Application and Acceptance of Proposed 80-Unit Multifamily Development with Associated Site Improvements. This property is located at 110 East Hollis Street. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at this package from the board and want to make a motion as to whether or not it's ready to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Peterson. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber.
Before we, before we do that, I have a question about one, just let me make sure I know which one it is before we.
Yep.
Okay, it's not that, it's not this one, good.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion passes. Okay, do we have the applicant for case number eight?
Good evening. My name is Michael Malinowski. I am a civil engineer with Allen Major Associates. We are here to present the improvements to 110 East Hollis Street. It's a former Henry Hanger Building. The property is located at 110 East Hollis Street. It is approximately 0.9 acres in size. It is located at MAP 39, Lot One. The proposal is to renovate or an adaptive reuse of the existing building into approximately 80 units of multifamily consisting of studio, one-bed, and two-bed units. We will provide 68 parking spaces scattered throughout the site.
Just go up on the door and ask them to.
Little out. We can hear you through the door.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead. Yep. Parking?
So we have parking located.
Yeah, it gets like zoomed in. Zooming out, you know, better luck moving it.
I lost my arrow bar. There we go. So we have parking located around the back. A portion of the existing building is a low one-story building with a old chimney that's located in this area. That lower portion we removed to provide parking and green space at the back of the building. We also do have some additional parking that we're providing along the front, maintaining the existing curb cut out to East Hollis. As part of the proposal, there is a existing loading dock at this portion of the building. We are proposing to actually remove all of the pavement in front of that. we're proposing to actually remove all of the pavement in front of that, that will become sort of an amenity space that the architect can speak to at a later point. Providing a brick patio, kind of sitting area, and some grass space out in the front. Utilities on the site. We can kind of step back, the parcel is zoned as a general industrial within the transit-oriented district. We do have existing utilities on site, there is water, sewer, and gas, all of the... All of those will be upgraded as part of this package, so we have a new water service that'll provide updated sprinkler when we get to that point, as well as new gas service for the individual units. Existing drainage on site consists of catch basins that tie out to the municipal system, we are maintaining as much of the existing pavement as possible out there, we do have a reduction in impervious surface for that, so we have provided no additional stormwater out there. Additionally, as part of the project, we are taking a portion of the property at 158 Temple Street, that is part of the old Corville Ruthier, it's the old retail portion of that. There was a portion that's closer to the intersection of Temple Street and East Hollis that was a fenced-in yard, we will convert that to parking. As part of that, we're also proposing to remove pavement along the front, along Temple Street to allow for green space. So as you can see from our landscape plan, we have trees and shrubbery that are going in along Temple Street to kind of enhance that space, we also have shrubbery and trees that are going along the East Hollis portion as well. And I do have with me architects from Market Square here, Rob Harberson is here with us, who can speak to the architectural if you'd like, we also have the owner, Brian Tebow, who's the property owner as well.
Okay, great, yeah, great to hear about the architecture.
Rob Harberson, Market Square Architects in Portsmouth, we're located at 104 Congress Street, Suite 203. So this building is, we're trying to basically maintain as much of the existing building as we can, there's a number of sort of one-story additions of varying construction types in the back now that are being removed for the pavement, as Michael noted, and I'll scroll down, so this is, we're really locating the primary entry at the back, a lot of that has to do with making this building accessible, and providing accessible entries in proximity to parking spaces, and that was the area where probably a lot of that sort of construction was going to go away, and it sort of tucked the parking behind the building, so we could maintain a lot of the existing street frontage, which I thought was really valuable to the character of this neighborhood. So the primary entry is the back, the front of the building, basically the appearance remains more or less the same, we do have an entry at grade over here, and then this portion we have as essentially the clubhouse room for the apartment building, that comes out to a patio, and then we've proposed some green space before you get back to the sidewalk, which we think is a nice improvement as a buffer to the neighboring properties over what's there now. So that basically, you know, kind of repeats the site plan we showed before, this is more or less the layout of units as you go floor to floor, this is our entry core back here, so the primary public spaces, leasing office, gym, other, you know, yoga, utility rooms, other kinds of things are located on this corner. We have prepared the building long-term for the ability to have some of this space be commercial, should that become sort of miable from a market rate, all of these are market-rate studio one- and two-bed units, we anticipate that most of the residents will be younger couples or retired couples, and so that's typically what we see in this type of housing class, so the units more or less stack, we're working with existing structure that repeats throughout the building, and with that, I guess I would open up to any questions, so you can see, we're kind of cleaning up sort of what we would call those secondary add-on structures in the back, but the primary building is basically remaining as-is and just getting cleaned up and maintained.
So would your garden, so I assume it's like new windows and things like that?
There'll be new windows, there'll probably be some masonry repointing, the roof seems like it's in pretty good shape, but there are some spots where there have been some leaks over time that we will look to repair, but mostly it's being cleaned up, the aesthetics of the building, you know, mostly the building's in good shape and mostly it's just clean up what's there.
Okay. The Hollis Street side, the sidewalk and all that kind of stuff, I don't know if that's maybe for civil, but is there any work going on on that actual, you know, from the street to the building?
We do have provisions for repairing that sidewalk, that sidewalk's in somewhat rough shape, so we do have provisions for that, to also provide ADA tip-downs at the driveways that there aren't really now, we do also have landscape improvements that are happening along that kind of back of sidewalk, so to speak.
Okay, yeah, but the intent is to fix the sidewalk, the full length of the frontage there on that East Hollis side?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Weber?
So we do also have, we are maintaining sidewalks too on the Temple Street side, so right now, the, that kind of existing lot is paved basically from curb to the fence line, so the small area that we're removing for pavement, we're actually maintaining about six foot of pavement that we're gonna leave as sort of a sidewalk along Temple Street all the way down to provide access.
Okay. Mr. Weber?
Architect. I was out there and yesterday, and I noticed that there's a lot of, I don't know, extending of repair needed for the brickwork throughout, it's not, when you just said, this needs to be here and there, there's big gaping holes on your side, which I know you're gonna do, take care of, and it almost looks like you're gonna need to re-point everything, are you gonna be also sealing it with a...
Yeah, we would definitely waterproof it, absolutely, we actually, we just did a similar project, we renovated a large mill building in Lawrence that had a lot of similar condition to the brick, mostly the masonry, if you go to the inside of the building, there's not a lot of water penetration, there's not a lot of erosion of the brick, so that tells us that mostly it's contained at the surface, and so it's manageable, but that's the intent, is to basically re-point, waterproof, seal the masonry.
Here and there, re-point here and there. Other question, when you're doing your repairs on the front of the building, how is staging gonna impact the street?
That's something that we would want to work with city staff on as part of a construction management plan, and we would want to have the builder be a part of that, I wouldn't want to tell a builder and their masons how best to approach that.
No, I didn't know if that was already...
I'm certain that when we get to, when we get to work on the exterior envelope of the building, there will be a period of time where we'll want to look at how we have scaffolding on the street, and how that's coordinated with the city in a way that's appropriate.
And the lines are really, really close.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's great that you're doing, I appreciate, you know, that you're doing, gonna be doing a great job, and, did you mention that any of the space may have some retail?
We've, what we've done is, in the, in the infrastructure that we're putting in or proposing for the building, we've left open the possibility for long-term that first-floor space could be converted to retail at some point, so right now, the only amenity space in the building is basically amenity spaces like gym or business center that would be for the residents.
Okay. Why ask about the retail, is that means that your parking would be impacted by that? So I would believe that if you're gonna do, is this mixed-use now?
No, in the short term, this is proposed as a residential building only.
Okay, so you'd be coming back if you wanted to do it?
Yeah, and so I think long-term, that's what the market in this neighborhood tells us that probably this building can support, this property can support, down the road, as the transit overlay district hopefully grows towards the master plan, you know, the hope is that there would be more of a value in the first-floor commercial space, and we want to leave open that possibility for future, but there's currently no plans to have commercial space on the ground floor.
Do you know if there's bus stops right at your area or close to your area?
I know that we've had that discussion on the next property that we're gonna discuss, which is basically across Temple Street from that parking lot.
Because that's one of the big things that is now, because tenants are not using their cars as much, and it's bicycles and stuff walking the thing.
And that's really what we see in the multifamily projects that we work with in downtowns, really that's the desire right now for the marketplace, both millennials and retirees to be downtown, is the walkability, and we anticipate that here, there will be transit walking bicycles.
Just a quick question on, heard, being that this is adaptive reuse, I mean, are there aspects of the building's history that are being maintained or brought back, I mean, you know, some of the, particularly like the mill buildings and some of the other areas, you know, some of the original signage, you know, other things have been brought in?
I think we'll, you know, some of that we'll have to see what's available, I think inside the building, you know, a lot of what's in there is just stored goods, I did see there was one coat hanger that was like this big for marketing, so we might keep that and put it up, you know, someplace, I think, you know, typically in these kinds of buildings, what we see is that there's a desire to brand the spaces as part of that history, and we would typically have hints of that in the common spaces, I don't know sort of the depth of history enough to have more than that, it's not a historically registered property, it's not in the historic district, so it's, it's not a historic building, but I think when you have a property like this, trying to bring some elements of the character of its past into those public spaces is, is just fun, right?
Yeah, I know some of the ones that we've done sort of closer to downtown, and some of that's been incorporated into it.
Well, I think...
There's like a sign on the side of that building that faces off of it, like a Henry Hanger sign or something, right?
Yes.
As you're driving by, you know, I guess it'd be disappointing if there was no, you know, indication of the, so I guess, I don't know if we'd stipulate something like that.
I don't know if we've really evaluated elements like that on the building, and I think it would be different if we had been in the historic district, or if this was a registered property, we would have approached that differently.
Yeah.
I think we're interested in some of those elements, I think, we think that they have character, but we haven't evaluated any of them to see if they have the ability to be retained or saved.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Varley?
So this is sort of a combination staff question, and I think probably for the engineer. So first for staff, just because this is a transit-oriented development district, I noticed that the, the minimum, as in the case we were just talking about, for parking is 1.5 spaces per unit, do they not need a waiver because of the district that they're in?
No, they did a site plan suitability report, and that should be in your packet, and just like if it's in the mixed-use, by approving this plan as presented, you're basically giving them like waivers without having to individually list them out.
Right, so like the mixed-use district, they're not required to affirmably address a waiver, okay, so then I guess separately, I just want to talk about practically, you heard the discussion we had, again, in the last plan about sort of parking issues generally, but I wonder if you can speak to sort of the, what you view as the parking needs, given that looks we have sixty-eight spaces for eighty-two units, and that's, you know, well under the, what would otherwise be required on the ordinance for the 1.5 spaces per unit, so I wonder if you could just speak to that a little bit more.
It goes back to the...
Name?
Sorry, Michael from Allen and Major Associates, sorry. 400 Harvey Road in Manchester, I forgot to do that before. The parking especially for this building, being in the transit-oriented district, it's the kind of premise that you're gonna start to get a lot more people that are gonna use public transportation, they're gonna be riding their bikes, and it's, it's close to the downtown, it's close to the bus stops, so the likelihood that you're gonna get every resident needing a car or space is unlikely at this location.
Yeah, I guess, you know, my, because we've run into this in the context of some other projects too, and, you know, Mr. Claire mentioned, for example, one of the, you know, the mill buildings downtown, but, you know, if we're, if there was something closer to downtown, we'd have more, you know, on-street parking, for example, or public parking access, which I don't think we really have here, and while I appreciate, I certainly, I like the idea of having downtown housing and hopefully people using their cars less and using public transportation, but, you know, this strikes me as, because it's not right downtown, and because we don't have a particularly well-developed transit system in Nashville, I'm just wondering if, you know, if this is, if the sixty-eight spaces is, given the location of this property is sufficient, so I'm just wondering, have, have you done any sort of market research or anything of equivalence to determine sort of what the, you know, what the market would be for people renting, understanding that there would be very limited parking?
Yeah, I would leave that question to Rob.
So we've based this, really, a lot of the, we have in our office probably about a thousand units of residential multifamily, either in design or construction right now, so we do a lot of this, and what we really look at is, is properties even building to building, and so even the next property that we're gonna look at, which is close by to this, we would approach differently than this one, and part of it is because of the nature of the units that are in this building, where you have tight, compact units, and especially the studios here, I would be surprised if anyone in the studios in this building had a car, and so part of it's the nature of the size of the unit, and who you anticipate is going to go into that space, and here I would, you know, for studios, it's gonna be a single individual, a young person, or it's going to be probably a single retiree, and both of those individuals will probably not have a car, we would probably not associate a parking space with those units for this building, and so part of it is the marketability of the unit with or without a parking space, and because of the nature of these buildings and the street frontage, and we know that we're gonna be proposing basically a transit stop across the street at, at the Temple Project, you know, we feel, we feel comfortable from a marketing standpoint that this works for this property.
Hold on, Will Zagoia?
Thank you. I, I guess from talking with other developers and looking at what goes on here and in Nashville, and being a resident in South Nashville, my concern is, and, and this is my concern with property, or parking, many of the people I know who are single, who are living downtown, work in Massachusetts, and they don't get to a train, and they don't get to a bus, they're driving to work, or they're driving to Lowell, or they're driving to Ale Life, and so, I'm, I'm just putting that out there too, there, we, we are still developing our capacity to have work, live, play in Nashville, and so I think that's how we're a little different from Portsmouth, or Exeter, or Lowell, or any of these other places that have access to train, and I'm sure you are well familiar with what's going on here, and, you know, we have hopes and you'll be beautifully situated, and I drive by their building twice a day, back and forth from work, so I'm thrilled to have something done with it, but, but I'm just going to put that out there, and, and the people I know who are retired and they're, in their late fifties and early sixties, they have cars and they're going places, and unfortunately, we're still at a point in Nashville where you can't really get there from here, and, and it's just the reality of it, and, and I've been talking to other developers who are trying to figure out, you know, how to, how to bridge that.
It's a very complex problem, and no developer likes to basically build more spaces than they need, but in New Hampshire in general, not just here, a lot of people still want to store cars, and the challenge is balancing that with the need and marketability of your units, so, you know, we looked at this property even entirely different from the Temple Street property, which we're gonna talk about shortly, and we would market this differently into a total, totally different group of people, and so, and part of that is the nature of the building and the type of units you would have in this building, and part of it is, when you're looking at that many units across two properties, creating enough variety of housing types and options to get to those different market sectors, so, but our charge from private developers is, you have... So, but our charge from private developers is, you have to give me as many units as you give me, but they better work for parking, they better be marketable. And so that's, that's what we, you know, we really look at. I spend a lot of time, I have a planning background as well, and I spend a lot of time, you know, going to workforce housing charrettes and going to Plan New Hampshire and going to Planners Association conferences to talk about exactly those things. But even within these two parcels, so close, these buildings are being approached in a very different way and would likely be marketed to totally different groups of people. And, and, you know, in terms of the age ranges, I think they'd be probably similar. But in terms of when you go into the leasing office and you say, "What do I get with my monthly rent?", there's a different package, if that makes sense.
So, is there, and maybe this is for civil, but is the site capable of more parking? Because, you know, several of our, I'll call it our downtown developments, we've had sort of a backup plan, right, for the additional parking. And I guess in the last two instances I can think of, a factory, the backup plan has been initiated, you know? So, you know, I understand not building more than you need, but is there a plan on the site, if you do need more, that we could implement at a later date?
Unfortunately, no. I mean, we're adding, we're creating parking now by taking a portion of the building down.
Right.
So it's the one-story kind of low, non-essential part of the building. We're taking down and actually adding gap parking and such there. Right now, it's just a drive aisle behind that Henry Hanger building, and there's probably four or five parking spaces back there, that's it. And the building, as you know, is situated probably about six or seven feet from the property line.
Right.
And then it extends out in the back, there's actually an old loading dock and a rail spur that came off of there so that they could actually offload-
Right.
-the trains right there. So we don't have extra real estate to start adding large amounts of parking. And that's part of what we had looked at with kind of providing spaces out on Temple Street that is a short walk along the city sidewalk to provide additional parking.
Right. With the Temple Street, that there's no more space on that?
No, we took half of, there's, there was an existing kind of fenced-in lot. The rest of the property still has the old Corvo Ruthier retail building on it that is kind of vacant now. The, the property owner's kind of subletting some of the parking area to one of the contractors in town, that they're using it as kind of a temporary staging area. But at some point, they may want to look to lease that building, and we need to provide parking for that portion of, of the site.
Yeah, okay.
If I could just add one thing.
Sure.
There, there is one caveat to that, and that is that we know that the rail trail is essentially going through this property. One conversation that we have had with planning department staff is, we will obviously be very interested when that occurs. One, is there a way to create better pedestrian access? But also, is there a possibility of a shared parking with the city when they develop that property? Obviously, we haven't, they haven't gotten through a planning process with that, and that's something that we want to engage them with. That may be a future potential, but obviously we can't count on that now.
Yeah.
Alderman, tell us.
Okay, just for clarification. So will the parking spaces be leased specifically to specific apartments? Or is there potential for 80 units and 160 cars?
There's, there's a lot of different ways to do that, and I don't know that the determination has been made on that. I think when, when you're looking at sort of this number of parking spaces with this number of units, it's pretty common to either number spaces, or basically a sign, you get one car with your unit, or two cars, depending on the size of your unit. It's pretty typical.
Mr. Peterson?
Just a point of clarification. When I look at the staff report, it says there are 68 parking spaces. And when I look at the suitability report put out by Market Square Architects, section five says there's 125 parking spaces. What's the right number?
Yeah, I think that's a typo in the suitability report, it should be 68.
68, that's the number we're sticking with. I have one other question, maybe two more. All of the traffic entering and exiting the 68 spaces do it via East Hollis Street, is that correct? Or is there another access road to get in and out of the parking lot?
On which, for the East Hollis? There's one driveway on East Hollis, and then the other spaces are out on Temple Street.
Oh, so they would enter that other lot through Temple Street, then walk to the building?
That's correct.
So all the cars wouldn't be getting in and out on East Hollis Street?
That's correct.
Because I find, in the afternoon, sometimes that bridge that goes to Hudson is already backed up to the Hanger Building already, so it...
Yeah, based on, we did have, and we do have the, the traffic engineer here, Steve Pernoff, who can speak to the traffic.
You need to get closer to my-
It might be off. I don't know what he said, but he can't hear it.
Yep, it's working.
There, there we go. Pick it up, there we go. Steve Pernoff, the traffic engineer is, is here as well. He's done a preliminary memo for the project to kind of show that there is a minimus increase in the traffic for the project.
Well, along the same vein, in the staff report, it says a traffic memo was submitted, but a traffic impact report is not required. That place has got a traffic jam every day, how can we not have a report? I mean, we need like real data to show this is going to get jammed up every day if you add 68 more spaces.
I can leave that to Mr. Pernoff to answer that. But based on the merits of what we have, the, the increase in the number of trips for this project doesn't trip the requirement for a traffic studies for the-
Well, I'm speaking from driving experience, that's one place you want to avoid every afternoon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Stephen Pernoff with Pernoff and Company. And our office was asked to prepare the TIR worksheet that the city has. And we did that in a memorandum dated May 29th. And basically, your form has a table that has to be filled out with trip estimates. And if the number of trips generated exceeds certain criteria, then you have to do a full study. If you're below the criteria, you don't. And just to give you an example, on this particular project, we're estimating during the evening peak hour, and that would be the highest hour, the site would generate 36 vehicle trips. That's entering and exiting. And again, standard procedure is to rely on the ITE Trip Generation Manual, which we did. And just to compare that with your criteria, the threshold would be 75 in an hour, and we're at 36. There's also a daily threshold that the city has of 1,200, and we're at 434. So we're well below those numbers. In terms of your experience, sir, with backups, absolutely. This is an existing condition, and it's a fact of life at 4:00 to 5:00, or 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. The only other thing I just wanted to mention, with the 36 trips, and again, that's ins plus outs over a one-hour period, remember that some of those are going to be using Temple Street, because they're going to be in that parking lot, and others are going to be using East Hollis. So that number does get dispersed. There's two ways to head to and from the west, and there's one way to head to Hudson, so that 36 gets divided by three. So there is an impact. Anytime you create a development, you're going to create an impact. But the, the change, 36 over a one-hour period, that's really the minimus from a traffic operation standpoint. What you see today is going to be basically identical. You're not going to be able to detect a difference with 36 cars going three different ways. So there is an impact, but it's not going to dramatically change what you're experiencing today in the study area. Questions?
Mr. Boogie?
Yeah, I didn't want to cut off Mr.-
I'm on set, go ahead.
Okay. There's an, there's an email in here from Wayne Husband. "Please let the applicant in there, a traffic engineer, know that we will be looking for a traffic impact study for the cumulative impact of both of their developments combined." You familiar with this email? It was dated June 17th?
Yes.
One has access on Temple, the other has access on East Hollis. We are asking for a voluntary contribution of $200 per peak hour trip that would go towards the East Hollis Street Traffic Corridor account. But when I look at the application and the staff recommendations, I don't see that in the list of stipulations. What's the deal with that?
Number six covers-
Oh, it is?
Roman numeral four, I guess, paragraph number six.
Okay.
And the intent is to meet with Mr. Husband and go over these.
I don't want you to get the idea I agree with everything you're saying, but I'm glad that that's addressed, because I didn't see that before you said it. Thank you.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, engineer. Seeing that you have, you're relying that most of the people will not be using their cars, today's venue is either taxi or an Uber. Would you designate, think of designated a spot with like an address or a place so that the drivers know exactly where, they won't come to the front of the building, they'll go to this place, designated spot in your parking area?
We do have a little space that we've kind of, right here.
Yep.
We initially had a large dumpster location there. We've since moved it in, into the building, so it'll be internal. We've kind of converted that to grass. We do have the space that we could kind of demarcate as kind of a drop-off.
Because you're going to have, actually a majority, I'm pretty sure a majority of your people will be coming to that spot, I mean, will be using Uber. In not-too-distant future, I went on Nashville Regional Planning Commission, had a DOT come in and talk about AI cars, which is coming. So it's one of those things that is going to be happening more and more, so, good.
Alderman, Melissa Goya?
Yes, um- We'd like to answer it. The rail spur that's behind the building?
Yes.
Obviously, there's no use for it, you're not, unless you have a secret deal we don't know about, and you've got the train coming to Nashville, which we would love.
It is.
But I, I, as much as I go by there every day, I can't visualize what's there to keep people from walking across the rail spur to the Temple Street parking lot. Is there a chain-link fence there right now?
There is, there's, the, the entire perimeter of the site is fenced with, it's, it, it's a rather ugly-looking-
Yes.
-six-foot chain-link fence. As part of the project, we're actually proposing, there's an existing retaining wall that, that runs pretty much the entire length of the existing parking with that chain-link fence. We're actually proposing to, to change that out. And the fence will actually go all the way around and then tie back into the building. Sort of this point here.
Okay.
And then there's no access around the back. There actually is a fence along the railroad side to keep people from, the adjacent properties from entering that as well. But this small portion where the old rail spur is, there's no access from the building out to that space.
Okay, so people, we'd have to climb the fence to cross-
They would have to-
-their parking at Temple Street, yes?
Yes. Yeah, well, they'd have to actually cross probably two fences, because they'd have to hop the fence on our property, down the hill, cross the tracks, and then another fence on the other side.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for the applicant? Alderman, tell us.
I just have a question in this, you may not be able to answer it, just fine. If we put a stipulation that no more than 68 parking spaces would be leased to tenants of the building, with that, unless alternative measures were taken to make parking spaces available, how would that affect leasing the apartments?
I'm not sure. I'm an architect, I deal with a lot of these issues a lot, but I'm not an apartment building manager, and I'm not a company that develops and owns. And so I don't know if that would be something that would restrict them or challenge them. I mean, I, I know that uniformly, all of the multifamily housing developers that we work with, they want a building that works for the residents. That's not going to have problems relative to parking and those kinds of challenges. And, and they have a lot of strategies and tools, a lot of them used managed, you know, companies that specifically manage parking garages, especially in downtown areas where it's really a, can be a challenge. So I don't, I hesitate to, I guess, say that anything would be beneficial that might tie their hands in terms of a strategy that might work best for the property.
Alderman, Melissa Goya?
Yes, I, I just have a, a comment. I am not a traffic engineer, but I certainly sit in lots of traffic. And as I said, I go through that intersection and sometimes try to find ways to get around it in my trips back and forth to Hudson. Usually around 8:00 in the morning, and anywhere from 3:30 to 5:30, 6:00 at night, I'm coming back into the city. Temple Street, even though they're basically, right now, has no businesses on it and no, no parking, cars get backed up there forever. And I have seen a number of near misses, as people have come out and wanted to take a right to head downtown, and people just basically pulling into the middle of East Hollis Street, daring you to hit them as they want to take a left to head over to Hudson. So I am very concerned about the traffic impacts there. And when you look at the East Hollis project and the bridges and going into Hudson, what's being proposed is going to provide a bit of relief, but not all that much. And so I just have to say to you, I'm, I'm concerned about even 50 more cars in and out of there between 7:00 in the morning and 9:00 in the morning, as well as during the rush hour. And, and you've heard it from other people here. It, it can sometimes get actually really nasty at that corner.
I, I certainly understand that, I've driven in it myself. I don't think I'm going to tell you anything different than the traffic engineer did, and certainly he's more of an expert than I am. What I can say is, I think from a pedestrian standpoint, the sidewalks are going to definitely be improved along that corridor, which should improve safety to a degree. I think one condition that we are improving is, oh, right here at the side of the building now, which I think is a dangerous sort of pull-in, and then you're kind of forced to back out of, now at that congested intersection, that will be gone. That will be a patio and a landscaped area. And so whatever backup occurs from people backing back out into the street to, to leave that space or pull into that space, that will be improved certainly by this. I think another benefit of this as well is, at the same time as we're going through this proposal, right now, if I'm correct, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but the property line actually goes out into the middle of that street, and so we're cleaning that up with the city as well.
Other questions for the applicant?
No, okay, all right, thanks. At this point, I'd ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Please come forward, state your name and address, and let us know what you're concerned about.
I'm going to lower this.
Thanks.
My name's Bob Dionne. I live at 447 Main Dunstable Road in Nashville. And I'm representing BCAD Properties LLC, which owns the property abutting this on the west side. I'm not coming with any, any negative whatsoever. I think it's going to be a nice, a nice change from what we have there. I do have one concern, and that is, and I talked to Mike earlier, that there is a fence right now that is right, very close to my property line. And what he assured me was that that fence is going to be replaced. It's a chain-link fence right now. It'll be replaced by something prettier, privacy fence. And that it would be no closer than the fence that's there now. And I'd just like to get that confirmed, that that's the case, and have it on record, that that, the new fence will not be any closer than- that that, the new fence will not be any closer than what's there currently. It does say, it does show one point six feet in from their property line. And then what was stated, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but what I understood is that it, it actually will be moved back a little bit in the front of the property or on East Hollis Street, and it won't be any closer. But I'd just like to get that confirmed, and is there a way that the city would be able to make sure that that does actually occur?
So you're talking about the fence that's on the, I'll call it the west side of that, where it is the loading dock now or something?
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. It'll be a nice improvement because it's going to be grassy and a patio, and so it'll, it'll be nice. I just don't want that, that fence coming any closer to me.
All right. Where is, is, do you know where it is now in relation to the property line?
It's, it is on Henry Hanger property.
Yeah.
And roughly, I think it's one point six feet is what it says here.
Yeah, okay.
One point six to two feet onto their property.
Okay.
Which I imagine they would have to maintain it by coming over on the other side.
Okay.
And the, the concern is my building, because my building was built, I think, in nineteen twenties.
Yeah.
And they came very close to the property line. And there's two, three means of egress from that side from my building. And the people can get by now. It's about a three foot wide area.
Yeah.
But if the, if the fence comes any closer, we're going to be squeezed. We, we won't be able to use the, the access that's been in adverse possession for maybe a hundred years.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't think, I, I'm sure that's not the intention to cause any problem. I just want to get it confirmed.
Just to clarify, okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern? That's fine, make sure you stay in.
My name is Christopher Eckler. I live at twenty-two Amory Street, and I own and manage some properties nearby.
Yeah.
And I'm, I think it's a fantastic project, and I just wanted to address the traffic issues. And I don't see any traffic problems that wouldn't be addressed by putting a traffic light there, and I don't know why there isn't one there. That's all I want to say.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I, we don't have Steve here tonight, but I, I think there is a whole plan for sort of lights and changes to the East Hollis to Hudson corridor. That's part of a larger city development. Can't really speak to it today because I don't have, I don't know if anybody else has any more detail on that.
There's, there is the whole East Hollis plan, as Mr. Schaefer knows. I would, I would suggest there's probably not a light there because there's already a light at Arlington Street. And sometimes Arlington Street gets backed up beyond Temple, heading towards Hudson, which is why the people on Temple get so upset that they can't make a right turn or a left turn. So I think that's, that's, that whole area from Arlington Street to the river and into Hudson is being looked at in terms of traffic flow. But I, I think that's why there's probably not a light there, because it would just actually make the problem worse.
Right. It is a known city issue that is being investigated, and there are.
And the state's working on that.
Yeah, so. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Come on up. And remember to state your name and address, please.
Peter Schaefer, fifteen E Street. I'm in, I actually live in that area. I don't have any opposition particularly, but have some questions and maybe some, a few comments. The first thing was that the side, everybody knows how that sidewalk is along there. So thanks, you're going to clean that up. But what I've, what I've noticed is they've got those telephone poles right there, too. So at the moment, when you walk down the sidewalk and barely get past the sidewalk, is that a telephone poles are between you and the street, and there's really no room? Does that, do the telephone poles go away? Do you move?
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. You know, so are the telephone poles being moved, or is there something done so it's like people can actually walk there a little easier? Just a question, because I don't know where you would put them, but that was one of the questions. The other one was, you know, there's a train crossing right there. So one of the things you might want to consider is that it gets pretty loud at night sometimes when those trains come through. And I don't know if there's anything you can do about that. I know there are triple pane windows. I'm sure you don't want to put them in the whole building, but I wonder if some of them, you might need to think about that. You won't notice it when you go down and during the day look at it, but we know at night that that thing comes through there and it gets pretty loud. You might want to consider that. The, one thing I was going to ask about whether there would be a turning lane going into, into, we just talked about how all that traffic's going to go, and I don't know what you can do there, but during rush hour, one more car makes a difference, okay? When you're not in a rush hour, it's not a problem, you can do whatever you want. But when you're in rush hour, adding one more car adds a problem because you have traffic going both ways. So if somebody wants to turn, they can't turn because the other's lane is filled with traffic. So even one car makes a difference, and right now it's, it's probably an impossible to fix, but that's the way it is. I'm just wondering whether, if there was some way of having a turning lane there or something. And one more comment was that that whole area is being redeveloped, and there used to be a lot of companies like, you know, like a Henry Hanger has a, you know, it's a landmark today, so you can go tell somebody, go down to Henry Hanger and make a left, you know? So it's nice to have these landmarks around, so you might want to see if you can do that. You know, there's a main manufacturing that was down the street. There's a book written on it, you can write, you can read the book on it. So there's a lot of history that is being lost because people just put apartments up, and that's the end of that. But it would be nice if it had a little bit of history remaining, if you could landmark it in some way, so that it actually becomes sort of, people view it as a destination almost, you know? And that would help. I'm, I'm sorry, and that would help. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern who have questions? Come on up.
My name's Bob Kerewak. I live at two Jefferson Drive in Hudson. I own property on East Hollis Street and Denton Street. I'm glad to see that the board shares my concerns with the traffic and the, and the number of parking spaces. I happen to own two parking lots that go with one of my buildings. And because of the density in that area, most of the buildings around there have no parking for their buildings. And I get the brunt of the issues of having tow people out of my lots. My concern basically is with the number of spaces they want to downsize to, they don't even have one space per unit. They want to get down to sixty-eight. It does state that we need one point five. Is that correct? For, for new buildings and, and new apartments?
I know.
I think that needs to be addressed. The traffic issue, as you've stated, is already bad, and as the other gentleman just stated, one more car wouldn't help. They're also talking about, about another development across the street from the Corwell Building, where the, they're using as a storage facility right now for asphalt and stuff. I, I really think that we need to think seriously about the amount of parking, and, and I have a question as to whether they have purchased that property or whether they're leasing those spaces on Temple Street. If they're leased spaces, they could someday go away, and that would bring an even bigger problem. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? All right. At this time, I'd ask the applicant to come back up and maybe try to address, there's a couple of specific questions, poles on sidewalks, you know, turning lanes, you know, there was some more on the parking, leased versus owned on that lot, stuff like that. Oh, the fence, yeah.
So the fence?
Yeah.
So as you can see, the one point six feet, that's the existing setback to the property line to the building. Right now, the chain link fence ties into the corner of the building, and actually there's an encroachment over the property line as you get out to East Hollis Street, the existing fence. We are proposing to replace that fence and maintain a, a minimal one point six offset from the property line to kind of clean that up. So there will actually be more clearance at the East Hollis Street side than there is currently.
Okay. So it would be like the same distance at the building edge?
That's correct.
You're kind of turning it.
Yeah, right, what, it, it kind of runs kitty corner, and it actually about eight or ten feet back from the property line, it actually crosses the property line onto the abutters property. So the distance between the fence and the building is much less at the East Hollis Street at, as you go back. So we'll actually be increasing that space.
Okay.
As part of this. As for the telephone poles and the sidewalk, yes, we were aware of that, and we've actually got provisions on our plans currently right now to adjust the sidewalk to maintain clearance behind this, a couple of telephone poles there. There's actually some pedestal cabinets for the crosswalk signals that are right there as well.
So you're, you're, you're improving that situation?
That's correct.
By adjusting the sidewalk depth?
Yep.
Okay.
So it'll be kind of flared around that, so.
Okay, so you're going to flare around?
Yeah.
I, can, may I just ask?
Sure.
A question? And, and this is, again, just from past experience, other people's experience that we hear about, is Alderman. Will, are you planning on maintaining that sidewalk in front that, that you're talking about? And, and, and I'm, I'll tell you why I'm asking. Because if you are, and you're planning on having a snow blower, when you do the flares around the poles, make sure you can get around them. And I'm just, I'm just going to leave, you don't have to tell me if you're going to maintain it or not, but this has become an issue in other places in the city where we've got sidewalks that are going around poles, but they also kind of narrow around the poles, so you can't get wheelchairs past them, you can't get snow blowers past them, you can't get walker, you don't, it, it becomes a, just this ongoing issue. So I'm just making a comment, a question you don't have to answer. We end up hearing about those things.
Yes.
Thank you.
One more question?
Well, let him finish his rebuttal, please.
Turning lanes, historic.
The lease, I think.
The lease. The, the, the current owner of the Henry Hanger piece, the property, actually owns the property out on Temple Street. So it's one contiguous owner that owns this piece as well as the property on Temple Street and the one across the street. So it's the same ownership that's associated. So he's not leasing that land specifically for this project, he actually owns the property.
So you will own the parking then?
Yes, he will.
That's developed, yeah.
Okay. Uh, what else?
And I think traffic, I mean, the, the traffic engineer has stated that we're going to work with Wayne on addressing the, any concerns that he may have relative to the traffic.
Mr. Weber?
He's all done. Over by the, the fence that you're talking about, is that area where the, the truck dock is, will that be an entrance for people?
With that, will we have our sitting area?
The old loading dock?
Grassy area?
No. So, the portion of that building, that's where there's a loading dock now, and it's a short portion of the building. So that's where we've proposed sort of like the clubhouse room for the residents.
Yes.
And so there's simply stairs down to a patio, and then there will be a landscape buffer between the sidewalk and that patio.
Okay. Just a recommendation, you might want to put a fence back and going into the building. Otherwise, you, you might get some people that you don't want to have into that area on your patio table.
That's something we've talked about, and I don't know that we've proposed one yet simply because I don't know that, I think there's people that feel differently, and there's thoughts about, what do you do with landscaping and sort of, we want to maintain a quality sort of pedestrian experience along this building and not make it necessarily feel like a barrier, but that's a conversation that has been had for sure.
Okay. It's just something you don't have to do. It's just a conversation.
Okay.
I'm on.
Thank you.
The other item, I guess, the two things I wanted to touch on, I think somebody made a comment about the historic nature of the building as a landmark. I think, again, it's not designated, it's not part of a historic district. In a lot of ways, it would probably be easier for us to propose to demolish this and put up a new building, but we agree, it's, it's important to maintain it for its character, both in the neighborhood and for the building. It's really valuable. So we, we are viewing it that way as kind of a neighborhood landmark as well. And then I guess the other comment, too, is that the transit oriented district, basically the requirement or how the language is described relative to parking is to come with a project and propose what you believe works for that project. And so that's what we're doing, is we're proposing something that we believe is viable for this particular property relative to the multifamily that we're proposing.
All done?
Mr. Weber?
Sorry. Talking about the lettering on the building, I'm part of the Historical District Commission, and there is over in Franklin Street, I believe, there's a building that, on the backside of it, has original old lettering, and they went back and because they liked that accent, they proposed that they're going to put that lettering back identical and then seal it, like you're going to do the ceiling. And so if you would like to look at that as a positive type of thing, it, and Nashua is kind of an historic city. There's a lot of historic stuff to it. And take a look at that, if you could.
I think we are highly interested in retaining everything that we can. What I don't know and haven't looked into enough is what the condition of the existing signage on the building is and how difficult that would be. But that's something, I think anything that we can keep, we will want to do simply to maintain the character of the building, in part because of the marketing and branding for the building itself.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Just to add to what Mr. Weber was saying, a, a lot of people drive by and they see the Henry Hanger words, that, that is a landmark, and people like to use that as a point of reference.
We think it's very valuable as well.
All right. If you're all set at this point, I, if there, the folks that had some concerns, if you do have others, you could get together and speak one more time if you prefer. Okay, good to go. All right. Any other questions for staff or for the applicant from the board as we're in the hearing here?
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
In your packet this evening, you received updated comments from engineering.
Right.
So for stipulation number three, if you're going to approve the plan, if you could change the date to July eleventh. And staff is also requesting, if you could add an additional stipulation, the parking lot that they're going to be using at one fifty-eight Temple Street has a building on there right now, and they're going to be using part of that lot for this parking. Staff would request that before they get a certificate of occupancy for this, that they amend the plan for one fifty-eight Temple Street, which is sheet thirty-nine, lot thirty-five, to show the parking and the building.
So like an ASML plan, is what you're looking for?
Yeah, or, or just to amend it, yeah.
Amend that.
Something.
All they need to do is, I don't think there's an existing site plan on that property.
Okay.
Microphone. They didn't hear you.
He didn't hear, he didn't.
Our research, there's not an existing site plan, it predates the site plan requirements of the city.
Yeah.
On the Corwell roof here property.
Okay.
So they'll probably have to come in and with a, with a site plan on that.
Yeah.
And they can have the commercial parking lot, and they can also have the buildings. They just need to show how that's going to work, since the two properties are not contiguous. There's a, the city-owned rail trail, and then there's a Wilton line between this and Temple Street.
Okay.
One other thing, I just noticed, I, I know when we worked with Brady Sullivan, it took him a year or two or, you know, it takes a while to rehab these older mill buildings. It doesn't happen overnight. The city's actively, the, the Heritage Rail Trail is moving forward. They hope to have a, they'll have a crossing just on other side of Denton, right next to the entrance at Henry Hanger, and there'll be a connection in a, over to the Crown Street parking lot. Until the trains comes, that. Until the trains comes, that Crown Street parking lot is empty. That's only like a half a block away. And the idea behind transit, or you know, when the transit's there, you'll probably have more people that might want to reside here that maybe not need a car. But in the interim, maybe there's something can be worked out between the city with the Crown Street parking lot too. If, if there is an issue with, with the need for additional parking. I don't see that as a, a major issue. I'm not sure if that's, that's occurred, uh, but that might be something that they can explore.
Is that, is that Crown Street parking lot? Is that public parking now or that would have to be, there'd have to be some arrangement?
It is, it's, it's a public parking lot. Uh, the operation of that, uh, some of that is used now by, I think, BAE Systems during the day. Uh, but it's a fairly large parking lot. It's a transit-oriented parking lot. It's, was built for the train station. And that will come eventually, but exactly when is the other, you know, as soon as they work out the, the rail issues.
Yeah, so that.
So that's, that's an idea, the thought, you know, this isn't gonna happen overnight.
Architect, I can probably explain that to you, uh, that it does.
You know, there's issues you run into renovating an older building and creating apartments. And it, it takes a little longer than new construction.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I would, I would just comment that that's the parking lot next to Make-It Labs. And as Mr. Houston said, um, BAE's been using it with an arrangement with the city. And then we have one of our buses pick up BAE employees and shuttle them over. So it's the lot you may have seen one of our buses.
Yep.
Parked in.
Yep, okay.
But they aren't parked there overnight.
Right.
As I understand, so.
Alright, okay. Alright, uh, anything else while we're in the hearing? Yeah, good, okay. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing and move on to the meeting, so. Um, so we've got, uh, you know, the Henry Hanger here, building here converted into residential. Um, I think it's, uh, my personally, I think it's a good use for the facility.
Yeah.
Um, the parking can be a challenge, I see that. It sounds like it's got limited solutions beyond, um, but, you know. Roger had some ideas there too that makes, makes some sense. Uh, welcome to anybody else's comments or thoughts, Mr. Rapucci?
Yeah, I, um, I'm gonna propose that we table this application and I'm gonna try to explain why I think we should table it. I think it's a great plan and I think developing these properties is great for the city and adding the apartments. I'm completely on board with that. I think the work done on this is incredibly professional and thorough and I have no problem with it. But I have a problem with us. I think we, we are not looking at this the right way. When I say us, I mean the city, not necessarily our board. I drive down there and I look at how many literally hundreds of apartments we have added into that area. That we're going to continue to add. The gigantic buildings that are put on East Hollis Street, the gigantic buildings before the bridge on the left there. We are adding hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of apartments in that area. And you guys said it. I was watching Mr. Peterson's face when he was talking about the traffic down there. You cannot drive through there. We can do all the planning we want, we can't make that bridge bigger. Right? You can't, you can't stop the train apparently from going through at four o'clock or whatever time it goes through because they have some right of way, right? It's a nightmare down there. And this is what I see us doing. And, and it, I, I think down to the, to the Spitbrook development down with Stabile down there. They have this massive plan that takes place over the course of years. But when we consider a piece of it, we only consider the piece of it. So we sit there and we go, well, this building is gonna add 27 trips and this many cars. So we say, okay. And then the next one comes along and this, so we do it piece by piece, but we don't do it collectively. And that's not the fault of the traffic engineer or the engineering. They're following the rules that we have laid out. They don't have to come up with a traffic study. Anybody who thinks that that's not gonna be impacted down there, I have to say, I, I just don't think you've lived in Nashua very long. There is no possible way it's not going to make a terrible situation worse. And if we don't have a collective plan for traffic, I understand the problems with parking. I don't believe the presentation that we get from applicants when it comes to, we think we're gonna market it to these people and that people. I think Alderman, Melissa Goldie has said it exactly right. People drive in this city. We might want to fantasize that they don't drive, but they drive everywhere. People who live in Mass Drive and people who live up here drive. They just do. And they, they can have all the experts they want. I'm not a meteorologist, but I know when it's raining outside. And I know that that's the situation that we're facing. So I look at it like, these are great plans. They spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, I'm sure, and I don't want to see them go away. But I think we're not doing our job if we don't, we have to address the problems before they get worse. Not hope they don't get worse and then when they do, try to figure out a way out of it. I think we need to look at traffic collectively, all of those apartment buildings in that area. What's proposed and what's already there before we go ahead and commit to more. That's why I want to table it, because I like it. I, I, but I don't see a solution. I see it just making a, a bad situation much worse. And, and, uh, by tabling it, we're not, we're not, uh, denying anything, but we're, we're taking a look at that. That, I'm not gonna try to sway anybody beyond that, but that's what I think our best option is right now.
Mr. Riley?
So, I mean, I, first of all, I, I agree with the concern on, on parking and, that aside for one moment. And, you know, I agree with, with both of you said in terms of, you know, if there's young people there who have, you know, who are working age, they're gonna be driving. And if there's retirees there, they're probably gonna have at least one car. So I, I still have that concern. I mean, it's somewhat, you know, mitigated by, you know, what Roger described with the, the parking lot nearby. So if, if I could see something more formal in terms of an understanding between the applicant and the city to have that parking available. Uh, I, I think that would, you know, that would go a long way towards addressing my concern in that regard. And, and I agree with the traffic impact. I think, Jerry, you're right that, I mean, these projects all have an incremental impact. And we should be looking at it from a more global perspective. And I think to some degree the city is, is doing that in terms of looking at traffic improvements. And, and I understand, you know, why you're proposing that we table it. My only concern is that, you know, typically if we, if we table a decision on something, we're doing it because we have an expectation or demand of the applicant. They do something fairly specific that they, you know, go and review a particular concern. And, you know, present a revised proposal or, you know, a solution to the problem we've identified. And I, I just don't know what we would be asking the applicant to do here. So, and I don't have, I don't have a good answer to that in terms of, you know, to, to make a suggestion otherwise. But that would just be my concern, is what are we asking the applicant to do? Because if we're tabling it, it has to be some, for some, you know, definite period of time where we say, you're gonna come back here. And, you know, and, and try to address the, the problem that we've identified.
Well, I think, let me correct, we, we have done this before where we've tabled for a traffic study that incorporates multiple projects. We did do that. I think we, um, actually, and I, I thought there was a traffic study done for the development. That's right there up against the river. But, you know, and it, so there's a, yeah, there's a starting point there. But, you know, if we were going to require additional traffic study, I think what we'd want to be specific about is what the scope of that study encompass. And it might be this development, the proposed, you know, frankly, case number nine.
Right.
And the existing, uh, or the latest development. Someone correct me, what's the name of that development that's right up against?
Renaissance?
Renaissance.
Renaissance, right.
Combine all of those.
Everything that's been built in the last five years.
Yeah, anything within, you know, uh, that area. Cause yeah, I, I think, I mean, we've talked about this for like the Spitbrook development. At some point we have to kinda say, alright, we need to look at all of the ones together. Cause we are getting some piecemeal here. But there's a baseline, I think, for this one to build on top of as well. It's not gonna have to start from ground zero. You know, but if, if it, if the Renaissance one were added to this development and updated to include these, these two projects. And maybe even the potential for transit. Yeah. Then we could get a better feel for the, essentially that area that's by the bridge. Alderman, Melissa Goldie?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, um, obviously I'm not voting, um, because Alderman Tenz is here. Um, so it's all on you, Alderman Tenz. No, um, but I, I'm trying to think of these Hollis Street study. And, and I don't think it took into account this development. And so, you know, as you said, there is a basis.
Yeah, no, I've seen the Renaissance one. I mean, I, we're all here for that one, so these weren't.
Part of that, right.
Right.
And, and the, the Hollis Street, East Hollis Street develop, um, piece that is looking at the bridges and the Hudson side of the river. Um, I don't think took this into account. Um, and, and we've been working with the state on that. So, um, DOT's been involved in putting that together and, and PRC's been involved in that. So there is some baseline information that's there that could be used to, um, provide a start in something to lay this on top of.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, thank you. Um, I think we're getting away from what the owner has brought forth. He's not bringing forth a building with 168 parking spaces or 200 parking spaces. He's developing this property for a certain type of group of people that will, will not have a car. They're not gonna have a car. They're not gonna have, be able, they're not gonna buy this, uh, one studio apartment with the intent of having a car with that studio apartment. They're gonna understand when they're purchasing this, they're not gonna have a car. Um, their only parking are gonna be these amount of parking spaces. And our traffic people and our regulations that were, that are set forth deems that they don't need a traffic study. If we want a traffic study for this certain time, then we need to get the traffic study people in here and say, hey, something's gotta change. But he's bringing forth property that doesn't have parking for their people. And when they're purchasing, their marketing department are gonna hi, uh, rent people, they're only gonna have no parking spaces. We've had this on many other places that didn't have any parking and we didn't have a problem with it. We, we thought it would be a problem, but it wasn't a problem and it's still not a problem. So we're looking to, for them to get more parking spaces, which would, you know, say, you need more parking. But now you're, by doing, us doing that, now we're adding to the traffic problem. They're gonna have people coming in that are not gonna be using this, that are gonna stay here with a car. They understand they're gonna use public transportation as their means to go from here A to B, renting this place. They're gonna understand that or they won't rent from here.
Yeah, I don't know that I have so much of an issue with the parking. I, I think the bigger issue is the, the piecemeal development. Or running around that, those, you know, essentially three roads there coming into Hudson right there. That, you know, and bringing that together.
But they're, they're using, if it was just all going on Hudson, I mean Hollis Street, yeah, I could understand a big problem. But they're not, they're, it's divided up.
Right, but all three of those streets have, are backed up.
They are backed up, but I think at a minimum, at a minimum, we've got, as the applicant, the applicant alluded to and, and you did as well, Scott.
I mean, we've at least got effectively these two projects that are, you know, being developed sort of together. So I think at a minimum, you know, we would say, well, you should at least be considering the impact of these two projects. And I think it would not be unreasonable in that context to say also consider, you know, other neighboring projects that have been be, built recently in terms of. I, I, I mean, I think that's not unusual in, in terms of a traffic study, to do that. So I, I, I don't, I, I think, you know, even if there were other situations in which we'd say, gee, this is, you know, because I've, I've come to that conclusion in other cases as well. Where we say, well, this is truly an incremental development. The impact of this is not particularly significant. And so it, it may not be appropriate to say to this developer in this situation, gee, you're, you're, you know, increasing the traffic by, you know, one percent. So, you know, you need to go do this, you know, comprehensive traffic study. But I think here at a minimum, we can look at these two different projects and, you know, and I would say it's a little bit more than simply incremental. And, and I, and I don't think it would be unreasonable to say to the applicant here, you know, we need something a bit more comprehensive.
What is, what would be the answer if the answer is we're impacting it more, then we don't approve? How would you, you're, there is, there, what he was saying was 32 cars per hour. And according to our traffic study people on our, from the city said, that's fine. If we want that changed, then we need the traffic study, uh, arrangements to change. But for this amount, I can't see that, if he was bringing a, a place that has a great deal more traffic. And I mean, all these people together would have a parking space, I could see it. But they are bringing forth something that the city needs for the people to drive, or not drive, but go walk, take the bus, take public transportation. And every study that I've seen on DOT, there, that's what they're looking for, is places that will, apartment buildings that will produce and use public transportation instead of cars. That's what they're looking for. The DOT is looking for smart streets and for public transportation.
Yeah.
And by denying this person, this applicant, that I think we're going against what's there.
I don't think we're, I don't think we're denying anything. We're asking for more information to be able to make better educated guess on the collectiveness of multiple developments, you know? We've done that in several instances. I mean, when we developed along Amherst Street, right? I mean, there was a traffic study that went from basically, you know, Route 3 to all the way down, you know, uh, you know, three or four miles down the road. And as we were doing additional developments, we were able to draw from that study and know, okay, when this comes in, we're gonna, you know, the road's gonna get widened. This intersection's gonna change from a jug handle to a, a cross. You know, that study gave us a basis for understanding how that works, so.
Yeah, and I would just say, this is, Scott, as you said, we've, we've, we've done this in past cases where we said, gee, we just don't have enough information here. And, and I would differentiate this from, you know, a situation where, you know, you know, the zoning ordinance says you can use your property a particular way. It's not as if we're saying, well, no, you can't use the property in that way. We're simply saying, you know, so I, I, I think that the traffic impact study threshold is a little bit different in the sense that that's, that's sort of the minimum. Where you, you, you are obligated to perform the traffic study, but that doesn't mean that we can't request that the applicant perform a traffic study, even if it's, you know, u- under the threshold. And I, and again, I think, I think it's appropriate in this circumstance to consider this project with, with the next one's the same developer is gonna be, would be presenting. Which is, you know, essentially next door to this development, so.
Can we ask that the city traffic, um, person that we have attend the meeting so he can have input? And we can ask that question out of them?
I'm, I'm not sure what you mean. Ask, you mean have him, if we were to table it, have him?
If you're gonna table it, then they're gonna come forward.
You're suggesting, ask the traff, the city traffic engineer to be in attendance?
Yes, to have input on our problem that we have so he can have a better, so we can better, so. Yes, to have input on our problem that we have, so he can have a better, so we can better, so we as a board can have better information, not just a traffic study.
Yeah, I think we can ask anybody we want to come to the meeting from the city, but the absence of the traffic report is not that useful to have anybody here, so, you know, the, the traffic threshold memo doesn't give you that connectivity detail between developments. It's essentially a development as an island, you know, in and of itself.
But he might also.
What we're not comfortable with is understanding that we've just done a large development, you know, over Renaissance. We've, we're looking at a development here and then essentially another one adjacent to it. Now we've got three developments that are using the same roadway scenario, which we all know, and we've seen evidence from other traffic engineers, particularly when the Renaissance folks were here, as their phases got developed, there was gonna be sort of failures at the intersections in terms of traffic load. We knew that was coming with the additional development of Renaissance, now we're adding these ones to the same roadway.
And I would.
We, we know this, we've already been informed that additional, um, traffic on these three roads in particular that come into Hudson have an issue from other studies.
And the Renaissance, uh, application that ultimately was approved or in different phases was approved specifically contemplated traffic improvements.
Right.
As, as part of that development, so.
And we want those improvements that have been discussed there to be looked at as part of the traffic study for these two developments, I think. Cause they're gonna affect it. That's my two cents, so we probably gonna come to some agreement here. But it, it sounds like there's support for developing a more comprehensive traffic study that includes this development and any future developments that are being planned within, you know, the very near future, which we know we have one at least, and the existing developments that have been done in the last, say, five years, you know, that would encompass those. Mr. Peterson?
I think as a national city planning department, we're just faced with a quandary, you know, they're saying, we need workforce housing, and we have the Renaissance, and then we have this project, case number eight, and case number nine, which you haven't even started talking about. If we approve, approve all those, sure, we'll satisfy the workforce housing, but at the same time, we're called the planning department, but if we create a huge traffic jam in this corner of town on a daily basis, that means we did inadequate planning. So I think the, the talk about getting the traffic engineers, um, involved in a comprehensive plan, an overall plan, would be good. Then the other thing, um, the market forces may also determine, people may not wanna move in where there's no parking spaces and there's traffic all the time. And one way the city could perhaps alleviate that is provide a, a better mass transportation link from that section of town to the downtown. So, uh, I even thought, what about that rail that's right there? Maybe the city could get permission to do a, a trolley, you know, from that part of town, right to the downtown and then back again. And people wouldn't have to hop in their car and they wouldn't have to stand around and wait for the bus too much. So, um, some kind of multimodal thing, but we need, you know, a, a better plan. And hopefully, people will stop being automobile centric and learn how to get around or live and work in a place where they don't need a car as much. And then, um, uh, so those are my thoughts. We have a problem here, you know, we could approve this, cause we need the workforce housing, but on the other hand, people are gonna be mad at us for approving, uh, for increasing the traffic in that part of town severely for years to come.
All right.
Trade off.
Does someone have, um, a thought? Mr. Varley?
I, I don't wanna cut anything, cut anybody off if anyone wants to discuss this further, but if, if not, I'd be willing to make a motion to table.
Can we, can we discuss that a little bit, the motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, I think that what we should.
Just, just a point of order.
I'm sorry.
If Mr. Varley's gonna make a motion to table, you can't discuss a motion to table, so.
Well, no, so we'll discuss it before I make the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I meant, yeah. So we can talk about it now before we make the motion.
Yeah.
So I would be inclined, I think, respectfully, I think our chair and vice chair have a good understanding of the history of the traffic studies that have been done so far. It seems to me like, within a certain specified period of time, our motion should allow you to draft out specifically what we want as, out of this traffic study. We want a, we, a specific criteria that we're asking the applicant to look at, not just the general traffic studies. We'd like you to look at these, the traffic that's been increased within this amount of time of this application, whether it's, whatever it is, however you word it. And then we, uh, and we require the applicants to pay for it. I mean, it should, the, the, traffic study should be done by the applicants. And, but we should be specking out what we want.
Yeah.
Out of it. That's my only input into it.
Yeah.
Because quite frankly, I don't really know enough about it to, to know, to tell, say what it should be.
So just to be clear, you're suggesting that we would make that motion for the purpose of the applicant performing the traffic study with the understanding that we would follow up with them after this meeting to provide more specificity?
Yeah, within a period of, that's reasonable, so that we can tell them specifically what we want. We don't want, just wanna send them out there and, and them not really understanding what it is we're looking to know. Maybe they do, just by our conversation, but I think we should specify it. And I don't know that we can figure that out in the next ten minutes.
Oh, and that traffic engineer needs to take into account more than just their building and East Hollis Street. We have the other two giant projects going on simultaneously, and it's a bigger picture than just, you know, one project.
Right, yeah, no, that's, that's, I think we're all agreeing on that.
So if you are willing to, I think our motion, if it empowers the chair to, to set that criteria by a certain period of time, then we don't have to wait till our next meeting before we ask them what they want. We can just get that communicated and it can get going, in fairness to them. That's my recommendation.
The only other thought is, you, you know, we should table it to a date certain as well. And so, we have a meeting in August, you know, only one in August, and then, and then, when is our first September meeting?
September twelve. August eighth is September twelve.
So I, I would just ask the question, should we table it until our September meeting to provide sufficient time? Or, or is everyone comfortable tabling it to August with the understanding that the applicant may need to ask to postpone it?
If we continue it to August and then we need to continue it again, we can do that.
Okay.
So if, if, once, we, once we deliver what our expectation is, and if the applicant says, I can't do that by this amount of time, I need this amount of time, then at our next meeting, we can just table it to the date that, that accommodates that.
August eighth?
So we'd need to give them the requirements, though, probably within the next, you know, five working days, yeah.
Can you do that?
I think that's reasonable, yeah, yeah.
I think that's good.
Have you been, have anything else to add before?
No, I'm gonna take a shot at the motion.
Okay. So, um, that discussion in mind, I would make a motion to table new business number eight site plan for the specific purpose of, um, requiring the applicant to conduct a more comprehensive traffic impact study with additional specificity to be provided by the, the chair of the planning board, on behalf of the planning board, within five business days from this meeting. And that motion to table would be to continue the, uh, plan until our August eighth meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to table as stated by Mr. Varley. We have a second by Mr. Rapucci. There's no discussions on table, so, um, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? None, that motion passes. Okay, so. So we're gonna table that one with that. We'll get back to the applicant through the planning department on what the requirements are for the traffic impact study. With regard to the next item number nine, it's obviously related, I would think we have a couple of options with that. We could leave it, leave it, um, don't take jurisdiction of it, based on we believe that the traffic study is a requirement of the application. Or we could open it and table it along with the other one. Staff, I'm not sure, are there impacts to the applicant in terms of their timeframes or anything in either of those two scenarios?
Well, you've made your motion, I suppose you could ask applicant directly. I, I'm not sure what the applicant's timeline is. I think they wanna get moving and, and going as quickly as they can, I suspect.
Yeah.
I, you know, they're here, they're, they've got their consultants here. Certainly, the project itself is worth discussing, what they're proposing. That saves you a lot of time later on.
Yeah.
If, if your issue seems to be the traffic, uh, the traffic is, um, you've got the riverfront landing or Renaissance project, that's what, is it a hundred and fifty-eight units or something like that?
Right.
And then you have these two projects, eighty and a hundred and fifty-eight, something like two, two hundred and fifty, some odd units. And then a potential future you have on your agenda tonight is the, the new buy-to agreement, which is, I'm not sure how many units that is, maybe a hundred and fifty. So, you know, that's probably the, the known quantity that's out there that is gonna be on this roadway system. Two of the projects are on one side, and one's in the middle and the one's right there on East Hollis Street.
Right.
So it's dispersed, and you'll have a traffic engineer look at that. I know the city's done a lot of studies, especially with that crossover.
Right.
They've got a design, a preferred design, and that's gonna get funded and built at some point in the very near future for that, you know, where the bridge is.
Right.
And that should improve the situation according to the studies they've done. And hopefully, that accounts for any background additional traffic. So we aren't talking about huge numbers, hundreds or hundreds, but you're, you're talking about maybe five hundred, possibly up, up to six hundred units. Total. And they're multifamily, they, they don't generate as much traffic as, as other types of development. So you have to kind of weigh, weigh that in.
Yeah.
I, I think there's enough studies out there that maybe perhaps they can pull something together fairly quickly.
Right.
But I think it's part of a city issue, too, it's just not this developer, he's got two projects and you got other two.
Right.
So the city should be a part of that solution, and maybe that's something we could, you know, I think the city administration's gonna have to work with, uh, we'll talk with Director Marchand and, and Director Cummings, uh, and see what we can do to, to, to work with this developer and, and others to come up with a, a traffic plan that, that will work, work for the planning board.
Right, yeah.
My, yeah, my suggestion would be that we not accept jurisdiction on this plan, given the discussion we've just had and, and the table and the motion we made under there, because I, I just think it's, it's to our benefit and to the applicant's benefit, frankly, that, given what they've heard from us, that we look at it comprehensively, because obviously, we all know that that's gonna be a key issue for consideration of this plan, so I'm not sure it makes sense to, you know.
Stop the clock ticking on it.
Right, exactly, to, to, you know, to open the hearing, have them, give us the background, but then say, okay, that's great, but now we're, we're gonna table it. I, I, I just think it makes more sense to postpone it. That way, they're, we're sort of on the same, you know, page in terms of both of these plans and consider them both comprehensively.
Mr. Rapucci?
I actually, on, on application nine, on, on the ninth one, I actually had a question about something that would affect whether or not I think we should take jurisdiction of it. Is there a way for me to ask that question now so that the applicant knows what it is? So if it is an issue next, when we do take it off the table in two weeks, it's not a blind side to them.
Maybe the approach to take is to say, you know, indirectly by saying to staff, I have this concern, and then it's sort of on the record and they can communicate, and obviously, the applicant can hear it here, but staff can also.
Staff? I would like to, uh, ask a question about this. And if I look at the, um, sheet C one oh two of this plan, there's, um, there's a, a comment on this drawing that says, that, that proposes changing the lot line of this site. It says, propose lot line to benefit map lot, map thirty-six, lot sixty-six subdivision plan to be submitted under a separate application. So my question is, can we accept jurisdiction of this when we don't know where the lot line is going to be? Is that a, is that a standard that we would worry about, or is it addressed somewhere in the stipulations? Or is it something that's inconsequential and it won't affect what we do?
Well, if they're gonna, if they're gonna do a lot line adjustment, they'd have to come back and amend this plan. If, if this, the, the, um, you know, square footage or acreage changes on this,
Right.
with a lot line relocation, then they'd have to come back and amend this plan.
So what I'm asking is, should that be done before we consider the plan? Or is it perfectly okay to consider the plan and then consider the lot line adjustment later?
Well, when the lot line adjustment were to come in, one of the conditions of approval would be that before that lot line adjustment is recorded at the registry, this plan would have to be amended.
So they have to come back?
They'd have to come back.
This is kind of.
I guess I'm not asking the question the way it is in my head. The question is, is the adjustment gonna affect how we consider the application, I guess is what I'm saying.
Should they do the lot line adjustment first?
Yeah, if they do lot line adjustment, is that gonna affect the way we look at the project? I don't know. I'm asking, if you think, no, it's not, it's just a trivial thing, then fine, I just don't want it to come up.
Well, generally, we wanna see the lot line adjustment either at the same time as the.
And I didn't see any reference to that in, in the notes, so maybe we will, we can do that by the next meeting.
Correct. We'll have a conversation.
Renaissance had that, Renaissance had a lot of lot line changes throughout it.
Yeah, and it, we had to keep amending the plan.
Yeah.
Okay, it was, I, it's not like an issue, just a question.
Yeah, but if, if we're not gonna take jurisdiction, we have to give clear reason why we're not, and it could be for that reason and for additional traffic, whatever, whoever's gonna make that motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We need to be specific, so the applicant knows why, you know, cause we're not gonna add things to it.
Do we have to make a, we're not taking jurisdiction, or we simply say we're, we're electing to postpone consideration of it?
I think it's a good idea to say why.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm, that's fine, but I, I.
Whether it's in a motion or it's just in a comment, but we should say why, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, I, okay, I think.
And, and to the next, and have a date certain?
Yeah, to the date, it can be the same date. All right, let's make, make the motion.
So I would suggest we just refer to the same, basically the same language as the tabling motion, except we're not tabling this, because we haven't accepted it yet. But just to say, for, for the same purpose of conducting the traffic study that we've requested.
Sounds good to me.
I have a question from Mr. Rapucci.
Well, let's, um, we got a motion in play here, so.
But I haven't made the motion yet, but I will make.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, yeah.
Where on drawing C one oh two does it say we need a lot line adjustment?
If you go to, if you, maybe if you go up, um, across a quarter of the way and up halfway, from the lower left corner.
Left to right.
The, the existing lot line is shown in a dash.
Yeah.
And then there's a proposed lot line.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you making this motion at the, to take the jurisdiction, not to take jurisdiction?
I would, I would, I'd make the motion a little bit differently, but I would make a motion to postpone consideration of new business number nine site plan with the understanding that the, the basis for doing so is, um, to request that the app can conduct a comprehensive. that the basis for doing so is to request that the app conduct a comprehensive traffic study consistent with the motion made with respect to new business number eight, again with additional detail to be provided by the chair within five business days of this meeting, and that the postponement be until our next meeting on August 8th.
Second.
All right.
I don't know if I can make a good comment about the lot line relocation, but that is-
Nope.
We're not in a public hearing right now, so.
I just wanna say that Mr. Alanowski and myself have agreed to put on that application together because that, that line is dividing my properties from their properties.
Okay, all right, thanks. So we have a second on that? Do we have any, we can, this is a postponement motion, so we can have a, no, we can't have a discussion on that then, so.
I believe we can.
Can we? Well, do we have any discussion? No, okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, so that motion passes. Okay. All right, so.
Do you have a second?
Please a second.
Yeah, Mr. Pucci.
Pucci, thanks.
Yeah, he seconded it, so. Okay. So we'll, we'll be getting back in touch with the applicant within five days for the delineation of the traffic study scope, so we'll have that for ya.
All right, I'll keep you.
Yeah. All right, so, grab my paper. So new, new business site plan, case number 10, that particular one is postponed to September. We do have other business case number one, review of tentative agenda. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at that?
Mr. Chairman, I've taken a look at it. I don't see any items on the agenda which would have any regional impact.
Okay, so we have a motion that there are no items of regional impact. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion, anybody against? No, motion passes. Okay. So we have other business case number two. So this is that referral to the Board of Alderman on R-19-147, authorizing purchase and sale of city land at 21 Pine Street and land of Public Service Company. So this is, goes along with our earlier PSNH.
It, it does. And I think you saw the plans associated with that.
Yeah.
There's the, I know the Economic Development Director, Tim Cummings, and the city attorney had been working with the agreement with PSNH to make this happen with the land, that some of it was the Broad Street Parkway and, and to make that more usable.
Yeah.
You saw the plans, where it's going and what's happening. This is just a referral to the board since it's a city swapping or, you know, land deal. The charter requires the planning board to weigh in on that.
Right.
So staff would recommend favorable.
Okay. So we'd just be doing a positive referral or a negative referral? Mr. Pucci?
I'll make, if no other discussion, I'll make a motion that we, that we affirm the, what are we calling it?
Make a positive recommendation.
Make a positive recommendation, just with the language associated to it, that it's based on the work of the city and not based on our review of this, because I just got this tonight, and this is a complex thing. I don't want it to come across like I looked at it and studied it and I agree with it. I just agree that the city did their due diligence and, and I accept it at its face value.
Yep.
So that's my motion to approve that.
All right, do we have a second on that?
I'll second, and I'll just say, you know-
Mr. Varley?
Yeah, just say, obviously, we did, you know, I, I would say it's sort of consistent with our approval of the, of the, the site plan, so.
Yes, I'll add that as a-
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the positive recommendation?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, so that positive referral passes. Next, we have other business case number three, referral from Board of Alderman on proposed R-19-148, amending the authorization for sale of city land on Bridge Street and Sanders Street. So do we have someone to talk quick on that one?
Really just had answer, any questions of the board? Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman Andy Pearlman, Apprion Pearlman, bright and fresh here at midnight. It's been a while since I've done this at midnight. Mr. Chairman, I represent Renaissance at Nashua Limited Liability Company, and let me, before I speak to the ordinance and the recommendation, please know that I heard the board's discussion loud and clear about traffic in this area of Nashua. I'll take that back to my client, take that back to the traffic engineers, and when we do come back to the board, hopefully on this next phase, you know, we'll have a full-scale traffic presentation for, for you.
Yeah, maybe we can work together.
I, I, I heard the discussion. So we're just, we're just making modifications with, to the preferred development agreement with this proposed fourth amendment, which is to be authorized by the R-19-148. That you'll recall, this project's been around for some time. The preferred, preferred development agreement was entered into between the city, the Business and Industrial Development Authority, and my client Renaissance. The amendment had, the PDA, as we call it, the preferred development agreement, has had a couple of amendments. This last amendment is tweaking the agreement, so it addresses a couple of points. It sets a purchase price for the two parcels of land and a payment in lieu of a field that the PDA originally required. It sets hard deadlines for Renaissance to hit. The bidder group really was pushing us for, let's get this project done, we want to see this wrapped up, and so we have some deadlines in there. And then we have a pricing for the city if we are able to develop units above 147, which is now in the current concept plan. And I, I don't, did, did you folks get, I, I had a, I had a, just a brief project summary, kinda looked like that. Did you get that? Came in today.
Yes.
I apologize for the last minute, but, okay. And so what we're talking about is the two lots on Bridge Street on either side of Sanders Street.
Right.
The current concept plans that will come before you, hopefully before the year is out. They currently show 147 units. And part of this amendment that is before the Board of Alderman, and we hope for your positive recommendation, says that if we do get additional units above 147, there's an additional payment to the city of 7,500 bucks per unit above 147. So you have Director Cummings' recommendation. I know you have Bitter's strong support for this thing, and so we're hoping for a positive recommendation.
Okay.
And, and any questions? I'm, I'm here for Renaissance.
Any feedback from Alderman?
Yes, if I may.
Sure.
I had, a couple of people asked me about why we're not going to have the rectangular field. And as you know, in the city, we're always looking for fields. We never have enough. And so I got one in-person question and one email saying, why is this going away?
That's a very good question. So we've been working at this particular piece of the puzzle for two years approximately. We've met with DPW, we've talked to Nick Cagiano, I can't say it.
Cagiano.
Thank you, Cagiano, and Lisa Fatto. And to be honest, they don't want any more fields. They, they're at capacity for maintaining what they have. And so they said, what they, what truly what they said to us, we would prefer an in-kind donation to maintain what we have rather than an additional field. So that, that was, that was one factor. Another factor was, frankly, it was very difficult for the bidder group and my client to locate a couple of flat acres to install a field. So there's just some practical issues that we came across that we weren't, frankly, we weren't expecting. We thought it'd be a little easier task. And so then the negotiations turned to, okay, well, if it's not gonna be a field, what's the number going to be? And so after months of negotiations, we came up with that, the number that's in, in the amendment.
So if I may, I have, maybe this is for staff. So am I correct in understanding then that the money that we are receiving in lieu of a field is going to be going to park and wreck for maintenance of existing fields?
That I cannot answer. I mean, you have Director Cummings' memo here. I don't have any insight as to where those funds are going. The resolution, does the resolution spell it out?
No, it does not.
No, it does not.
It's not specified.
It just says that it requires payment in lieu of a rectangular athletic field.
I mean, we could make a recommendation, we, as part of our recommendation, we could-
To the board, yes.
To, to the Board of Alderman, we could say, we recommend you add language to clarify that. Or, I mean, that's within our ability to, I mean, we, we don't get the decision on it, but we can recommend it. People think that's a good idea.
Sorry, what was the, to clarify that?
Where this money is going.
The payment in lieu for the rectangular field would be-
You're suggesting it should go to maintaining existing fields, for example?
Either maintaining or purchasing property in another part of the city where they feel it would be-
Can we specify where the money should go?
Well, you can make that recommendation.
It's just a recommendation.
Yeah, we, we can't, we, we don't approve this at all.
There's nothing binding, it's just a subject.
We're just telling our idea.
The questions that were asked of me is, they're getting this, you know, they're paying this money for this athletic field. And, you know, what some of us here is, we can always use more soccer fields, we can always use more fields for cricket. So, you know, if, if your understanding is that this is where this money is supposed to be going, then I think the people who are interested in having more fields would like to know that it's going in that direction.
Sure. Did the skating park that came out of this area, that was, was that produced? That was made?
Yes, that's a Stella Stadium.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And is that needing any improvements or anything?
I don't think so. It was built and it's, it's working quite nicely, I think.
Okay.
It seems to be used much more heavily than the previous one that was down near the river. I mean, it's, it's really amazing, the number of kids that are using that.
One other thing that, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
If you're asking about funds for that, there's actually a separate fund that's, where money is put into that from the cell towers.
Okay.
Yeah.
One of the things that we've had, that we, we got, and I think it's being over at Greenlee Park is a, is the boat dock for canoes and stuff like that. And this area is another area that not on his, on the property, but right next to it, might be a good place for an, an additional boat dock, because they could row over and then come up here and come out of here if they wanted to. I'm just saying, this area would be a good, another good place for the city to think about.
Well, I think that, that's-
It's not their property, I'm just saying this area.
But I think that's Corps of Engineers controlled waterway, the Mermac is. Because we, we talked about it a lot when it was built, like, there was limits on what even Renaissance could do with even their walking path along there.
Well, I'm not saying on this property, I'm saying farther, a little bit farther up.
Yeah, but that whole river, I'm saying is-
Yeah, that's, not that, I'm talking Nashua.
Oh, yeah. Well, we should stick to, you know, what's our recommendation on this? Is someone gonna make a motion on this? It sounds like, I mean, I'm kinda in favor of-
I can't.
No, but I'm in favor of maybe adding to the recommendation language that we'd recommend that the funds received in lieu of the, the field are in some way directed towards, you know, additional field maintenance or purchase, you know, in other areas.
That's a motion to me.
Someone make that motion?
You did just fine.
All right, so we're gonna, you're gonna take that, Jerry?
No, I'm, I'm so tuned out.
Okay, all right, someone make it.
Okay, I will, I will make a motion that we provide a favorable recommendation on R-19-148 with the suggestion to the Board of Alderman that the $775,000 to be paid to the city in lieu of constructing a rectangle athletic field be specifically designated for the purposes of either maintaining existing fields or creating new athletic fields.
Okay. All right, so we have that motion to have a second. Second by Mr. Pucci. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We got one more other business, referral from committee on infrastructure petition to release facades. So I guess this goes with the pictures we have here?
Yeah.
If I may?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Andy Pearlman, Attorney with Apprion Pearlman, I'm here for Allen Mac Properties Limited Liability Company, owner of 452 Amherst Street, to ask the board to continue this to your August 8th meeting, at which time we're gonna come back with a professional historian, a report and document, and we'll get into a lot more detail about this facades.
Okay.
All right, anybody wanna, are you asking for a continuation?
I'd be happy to apply.
I was gonna say, I'd rather stay here and talk about it.
It's a ghostly hour, that's for sure.
So unless anyone else has anything they wanna add, I will make a motion to continue other business item number four until our August 8th meeting at the request of the Attorney Pearlman, I guess, the applicant, it's not the applicant per se, but at the request of Attorney Pearlman.
Okay. So we have that motion, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Pucci. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes.
Thank you, have a good day.
Yes.
All right, anybody willing to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned at 12:06 a.m.
On July 12.